For April 29, 2016, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Council Communications and Announcements. Do we have any today?
It was just here the other day, so I don't blame that.
We were just here the other day.
I only have a couple of things. I attended the San Mateo County Affordable Housing Task Force meeting yesterday. We are making very good progress, and we are looking to put some actionable items in the process so that when we're done, it just doesn't end up in a binder on a shelf somewhere. So we're actually looking at a lot of really good options to provide housing because it is everybody's problem. But in the interest of time, and because it's a long day, I'm going to stop it there.
Okay, thanks, Ron. I just want to say a couple of words about today, and maybe I'll use this opportunity right now to do that. You know, in previous years, we've done the budget in a really consolidated, very kind of abbreviated way, which hasn't given a lot of time for discussion or analysis, or really a conversation. And I'm really happy that we're moving to a longer format. I think this is an experiment. We can see how it goes. But, you know, there's that kind of old adage of like, "Don't tell me what your values are, just show me your budget, and then I'll tell you what your values are." And I think that's true. You know, I think that this is the main mechanism by which we articulate what we care about in the city. And so I think it's important, given that we're only doing this once every two years, that we really spend the time to talk about it and think about it. And I really appreciate that, you know, the staff has been moving to more of a metrics-based, performance-based budgeting model where you're saying, you know, "What did you do? Was it successful? Are there opportunities for improvement? What are you going to do over the next two years?" And then matching the dollars to the actual services that are being delivered to the community. And that's just a great model. It allows, I think, the staff to take leadership and ownership of what they're doing, and it makes our job easier because we can help guide in what the priorities are or ask questions about how to make things more effective. So I think we're totally on the right track. I'll just say to my colleagues, you know, just as a sort of procedural point, we're coming back for another budget session, probably to focus more on the capital budget in a couple of weeks. Is that right, or is it one week? Well, in one week. And then we're not taking any action today, we're not taking any action next week. We are taking action on the two-year budget in June. So if there are changes that we want made to the budget, the best thing to do is to reach some level of majority or consensus today and next week, and then that will be put into the budget that will then be brought to us in June. And then from a procedural perspective, you know, we have, each department has presentations today. We'll kind of consider those as several agenda items, and if there's public that wants to comment on those individual presentations, we'll pause for some public comment as we go. Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
All right. So item three B is staff comments on city administrative business. Jeff, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Item four is public comment for items not on the agenda, so items not related to the budget. I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll get the show on the road with item five, our study session on the two-year operating budget for fiscal years 2016 through 2018, and I will turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you. Crystal, can I get the clicker when you're ready?
Well, good morning, council. It's exciting to finally be here. I'd like to take a minute, as we get started, to thank the staff, not just the department heads who are in the room, but many, many of our staff who've been involved in developing the budget. By the time we get to this point here today, we're literally thousands of hours into developing the next two-year budget. So lots and lots of work goes into coming up with the budget, the changes to the budget that are going to be before the council over the next couple of weeks here. In general, the general fund budget of the city is looking to be about $38 million this year. I'm recommending a balanced, a structurally balanced budget to the council that actually shows a slight surplus in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 as we get started into the budget year. Building a little bit off of what the mayor said, there are some pretty significant structural changes to the budget process that you're going to be seeing this year. A few years ago, we moved from a one-year back to a two-year budget, allowing us to do a little bit more long-range planning. We built the five-year forecasting models into the budget to make sure that we avoid what we see as the financial pitfalls and obstacles out in the future. So we're doing more financial planning than ever. We've built a community satisfaction survey into the budget process, so every two years when we do the budget, in advance of that, we do the community satisfaction survey that was recently reported out to council. That helps inform the staff and the council as they're setting priorities. Performance measures have been a priority of the council the last several years, but it's not the kind of thing that you can just start doing and then start reporting on immediately. You need some time to actually gather some data so you've got something to report on. This budget is really going to be the first budget that starts to highlight some of that performance measure data, and it's only going to grow in the future in terms of its significance and its role in our budget process here in San Carlos. This year, we developed a new strategic planning process, and the idea behind this process was that we wanted to give the council the opportunity to get together as a group and then get together with their management staff in a process to develop and review the council priorities and large initiatives for the city. This was the first year that we really married that process to the budget process. So all the new initiatives, ideas, thoughts, and priorities that were created by the city council as part of the strategic planning session became very important to the staff as we've created this budget for you here today for the next two years so that we could address those items. And then finally, we've got the budget hearings for you. One, to allow the council a little bit more time to review our large budget, to review all the priorities being identified there, but also to provide the opportunity for the departments to show the community what they get. You know, we spend in excess of $50 million every year when you include all the budgets, general funds, sewer and street, and all those things. We're very proud of the work that we do. The council in the past has been very proud. The community seems very proud in the satisfaction survey of the work that we do for the community, and we'd like the opportunity to have the departments be able to highlight that good work and all those achievements from the last two years and talk about what their priorities are for the coming two years. So this budget includes past priorities of the city council, things such as additional police funding or traffic deputies would be examples of things that the council has added to the budget in recent years that are being continued on in this budget. Many of the green programs and communication initiatives that the council has started the last couple of years continue on. There are many new initiatives outlined in this budget: communication and outreach, newsletters, more video news items for the community, a complete website update. Those are things that have been identified by the city council as being priorities in the strategic plan, and you'll see those funding mechanisms recommended in this coming year's budget. Community engagement, citizens academies, block parties, you know, bringing the community together, community building-type activities, which have been very important to the city council over the last several years, continue on, and the new additional items that have been identified in the strategic plan are highlighted in our budget process. Then there are things like service demand items, additional funding for public works and community development, who are, you know, dealing with a real growth right now in the service demand of the community, with the building applications and home remodels and all those kinds of things that are coming in at record highs right now. I mean that we're bringing in a lot more fees associated with that, but we also have more expense in terms of processing those applications. The council, over the last several years, has really made it a priority to do more and more capital funding, and as a result, we need to do a little bit more in the way of public works funding. We're meeting all our required state and federal mandated programs, of which there are many that the council is aware of, particularly in the areas of sewer and stormwater. So those priorities are included in this budget. We're meeting our sewer consent decree items from baykeepers again this year, and the council will have the opportunity to approve millions and millions of dollars in capital infrastructure funding projects. We do have a few new positions and position upgrades that I'm recommending to the council, many of which either have to do with service demand in areas where additional fee money is coming in, so it's really kind of a wash. But there are also a couple that have to do with succession planning in parks and recreation, as well as retention, wanting to upgrade a few positions to be able to retain employees that we've invested a lot in, that have a lot of quality and experience that we'd like to see stay in our organization. And you'll see those in public works and community development. So now I'm going to sort of switch gears and start talking to some PowerPoint slides here, just a few, and you'll recognize these, I think, for the most part, from past years. Okay, so I've talked to, looking back at the budget process, we're going to be looking at some comparisons with other cities because it's always nice to kind of set the stage and remind people that, you know, while cities on the peninsula may all seem like they're very similar and the same, there's actually quite a bit of significant difference in how we organize and govern ourselves. And then we'll get into some of the budget recommendations as we go on. So today's schedule, you're going to hear from me, then you're going to get the big-picture financial overview from our Administrative Services Director, Rebecca Mendenhall, and then we'll get into the department presentations.
Jeff, excuse me, I apologize. Since I wasn't here, there was a binder that was made available to all of us, but some of I don't have mine. Could somebody maybe get that for me? Okay.
Then somebody do.
Thanks. Apologize, continue.
No problem. That is important. All right. So over the last several years, on average, our revenues grown 6.1%, which is a good thing, and our expenditures have grown about 4.3%. And most of the difference between that money, the council has invested either into reserves, economic uncertainty reserves, which have grown, our OPEB unfunded liability reserves, which the council's grown, and quite a bit has gone into additional capital project funding. So we're growing revenues faster than we're growing the operating budget, which is a good thing from your city manager's perspective. Comparable staffing levels, you've seen this before. We've got 72 full-time employees here in San Carlos relative to other agencies that are similar on the peninsula to San Carlos. It's a big, big difference, and that's because we organize our service delivery very, very differently, and we utilize contract services to a great extent, which is a model that you see very commonly in Southern California, but not something you see to a great extent in Northern California, though it is growing every year in terms of its use. And so as a result, we have far fewer employees, which means we have less benefits to fund, less unfunded liability and all that. And, you know, quite honestly, a budget that's easier to manage, an operation that's easier to manage and is more predictable over, you know, a three- or four- or five-year period. So here you can see revenue per capita. This is an area where you take a snapshot and you line San Carlos up against another number of other like cities, and you can see, hey, you know, we're actually kind of low on the revenue per capita scale. A lot of that, a lot of that, has to do with the fact that we receive a very low percentage of our community's property tax. That was fixed in the late '70s. There's nothing we can do about that. That's simply the legacy that we've inherited. But it does sort of reinforce the story of why, you know, over the last 30 or 40 years, the city councils in San Carlos have spent so much time and given so much consideration and thought to how the economic development of the community unfolds. And that hasn't changed today with this council. It continues on being an area where the council and management have to spend a lot of time in taking a close look at how we do economic development, because economic development funds a huge portion of our municipal services.
Pardon me. Matt, did you, do you have a question?
Yeah, just noticing here the big difference with Burlingame, and I'm wondering if a lot of that doesn't have to do with their being close to the airport and the hotels they have in the TOT.
I think that is a big area. They have a higher property tax rate than San Carlos, so that puts them ahead kind of out of the gate. They have a lot of hotels because of their proximity to the airport. You know, that's something that you just can't compete with, you know. Location is everything, right?
Are they also structured differently in terms of, like, we're in, you know, a sewer JPA and some other JPAs where we don't get the revenue so much directly, but they...
Possible. I'm not quite sure how they do their sewer, but this is a general fund comparison at least, so that wouldn't factor in here. Yeah.
I just have one question on the, this is total revenue, right, that we have?
Revenue per capita, yeah. And I believe this is general fund revenue per capita, not, so it doesn't include things like sewer fees or that kind of thing.
Okay.
So one other thing, Matt, to your point, Burlingame does have a few special taxes as well that we don't have that were approved by their voters, which also, yeah, and a number of auto dealerships as well. So I do actually, with, you know, with some of the development that we're projecting out into the future, I think you'll actually start to see a little bit of the change in some of these numbers here in San Carlos, and we actually may move a little bit more into the middle of the pack, hopefully, in the next four or five years. This is basically a similar-type slide on spending, as you could see, per capita, and this talks about safety and other city services, and you could see how we compare. This is a really sort of interesting slide from our perspective because we provide our safety services in a very different way, partnering with the sheriff's department for police services and partnering with the city of Redwood City for our fire services, you know, provides for a very different comparison in terms of our spending. But when you have, you know, less revenue per capita than other cities, you need to have less spending per capita than other cities as well.
Jeff, what do the two different blocks represent?
They are public safety spending and then all other services.
Which is top and which is bottom?
Which is which? Is it the top? I think it's, I think the blue and the green, if I'm not...
Probably safety's on the top.
I think safety's on the top.
I don't think we're at, that was all idea of switching, was getting us below 50% when we switched.
I believe that's accurate. So moving on, a little bit more about the process in detail. What we do at the staff level is we establish what we call a base budget. So we kind of scrub last year's budget. There's always one-time funding initiatives in just about every budget year that the council will have, large projects or, you know, that are not capital but operating in nature, that get taken out of next year's budget. They're no longer needed. Those projects are completed. That money's freed up. It's kind of put back into the pool for other things, if you will. So we took about half a million dollars out of last year's budget with things that were no longer, that were completed and no longer needed. And then we look at all the mandates and requirements that we know are coming and legal changes that have taken place in the year, as well as our contract obligations, you know, both with our employee groups and, you know, any other contracts that we have in place that have known increases in them, and we kind of build a base budget to cover the basics of the city. We determine whether or not we've got a surplus, whether or not we've got a deficit, so we kind of know how to approach things moving forward. Obviously, we had a surplus this year. And then we ask the departments to consider both additions and subtractions to their department. Is there anything that they're doing that they don't need to be doing? Is there anything that they're not doing that they feel they need to be doing? And in this year's budget, we've got about, I'd say, $950 to $1 million in new funding priorities that are included in the budget recommendation, and you'll hear about those in more detail as we go on. But just as sort of a big picture, we've got about $50,000 in the addition to the city council budget that you'll hear about today, about 140 in the city manager's budget that you'll hear about today. Next Friday, you'll hear about the $335,000 that we'd like to add to the community development department budget. The 130 to the Parks and Rec Department will be next Friday. We've got an additional 100,000 in the police budget that you'll hear about today, and public works, 162,000, that you'll hear about next Friday.
Are these annual numbers, or is this over two years?
These are annual, I believe, yeah. So in, they're approximations of each of the two years.
Matt, did you have a question?
Excuse me. When Jeff gets wrapped up here, I got a sort of a procedural question I want to ask.
Yeah, and I'm coming to an end here real quick. So, looking ahead, budget threats. These really haven't changed too much from what you've seen the past few years. Calpers is always something that we keep a very close eye on in terms of what their rates are going to be. It has a big effect on our budget. It's a large number in the budget. Unfunded liabilities, pension benefits for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, those remaining obligations continue to be a pretty big cost center in the budget, so we keep a close eye on those. Our medical costs are something that, you know, continue across the board to go up faster than revenue. Gas tax is something that I'm sure the council and the community have started to hear a lot about, sort of statewide, is a statewide issue, as the price of gas has come down pretty significantly and stayed low for a pretty significant period of time, and as the demand is starting to be pushed down by increasing use of public transit and more and more electric vehicles hitting the road, less and less gas taxes being generated statewide, which means we have less money for street projects, not just in this community, but in every community. And that's a problem that's going to need to be addressed. The legislature's got a lot of work around that right now, so we're kind of keeping a close eye on that for future years. And then, just because of the history of the state of California and their budget process, we always keep a close eye on them. Things are good right now, which means they're not doing anything too silly that involves cities and whatnot, but they are somebody that we always want to keep a very close watch on because when their budget starts to go a little bit sideways, they always like to look at local government for any ways of helping bail out the state, which is not something that we like to see. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to council if there's a few questions before Rebecca comes up and talks about the overview, the big-picture overview of the expenses and the revenues this year. So just in closing, again, I'd like to thank the staff for all the hard work that they've put in. Very proud of the document that we've got for you. This obviously is not the complete budget document that you'll see in June. This is sort of the working bones of the budget. There's still, you know, as we're sitting here meeting, there's still people in finance that are working on the budget. So this is a work in progress, but, boy, very appreciative and proud of where we're at and all the work that's been done to date. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Matt?
So the question I have, and I don't mean this to upset the whole apple cart or anything like that, but just looking at the years that we're dealing with here and the coinciding with the fact that we've got three council members sitting here who are going to make a decision on a budget that's going to carry forward, and, you know, we've got elections coming up in early, what, 2017? So what I'm getting is, it looks like we're establishing a budget that potentially almost a whole new council could live under, and what opportunity would those people have if, you know, if Cameron, Bob, and I weren't here and you got three new council members, which is, you know, potentiality. I'm not saying it's going to happen necessarily, but you've got that potentiality, and yet they are sitting, they would be sitting on the council with a budget that is already somewhat established out for two years, right?
That's correct. If I'm not mistaken on the timing, though, I think, you know, if, let's say, we had new council members elected in November of 17, that would really just be a few months before, you know, it would have been like they were elected last November, and here we are in March, starting to talk about, or April, May, starting to talk about a new budget, so.
So this goes through, I'm just looking at the dates, it goes through the 18?
Fiscal year 18, 17, 18. So this coming fiscal year, even though it's, the year starts in 16, we call it fiscal year 17, so it's the year that it ends.
They have to kind of live under it for six months.
They have a brand-new budget in June, the first June after they were elected, so.
Okay, so that's, yeah, okay.
Be pretty good, pretty smooth.
All right. Ron?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the city council says 50,000. I know none of us are getting a raise, so just, oh, I am.
You're not.
Is that what happened when I was gone Monday? So I was just curious, are you going to get into detail of what that 50,000 is all about?
Yeah, we're going to report out on the huge raise that the city council is not, I repeat, not getting in any of the next two years. So, yeah, that'll be covered in detail.
And Bob?
I guess more a question Rebecca, maybe. Have we built in, as I read, pers, I don't know if they said they were going to, or is, it appears they're going to raise their, you know, their rates or whatever, have we built that into this, some raise in their rates, or are we just, we're status quo with the numbers?
No, we've built it in, based on estimates that they've provided.
Okay, because I know I read that they were estimating to go fairly high, so, okay, great, because that could be substantially a lot of money.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment on this specific presentation? We'll move on forward.
Okay. Good morning. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before I get started in my presentation, I just want to echo what Jeff had said. Getting all of this detail together has been a lot of work, and not just for finance, but also for all the departments. As we moved from a department-based budget to a program-based budget and now to a performance-based budget, I think everybody in City Hall, the courtyard, the adult center, youth center, every employee has touched this budget in some way, and so I want to thank them for all the hard work that they put into this. And I especially want to thank Tracy Quack, who has spent hours and hours putting together all of these documents for us. So as the city manager has stated, the recommended budget includes or represents a balanced two-year budget. On the following slides, I'll explain the assumptions and changes from the current budget, as well as the recommendations. But before we get into the detail of the numbers, I thought it'd be helpful to show the city's fund structure. You know, we spend a lot of time talking about the general fund because it's our primary operating fund, but I did want to show in a graphical way that we do have a lot of other funds. And I'll be talking about the enterprise fund, which is our wastewater, our sewer fund today, the special revenue funds, and the internal service funds through my presentation. The capital funds will be discussed in more detail at the special study session next So general fund revenues, general fund is the primary operating fund for the city. It's used to account for most day-to-day activities, including general government, public safety, parks and recreation, traffic and street maintenance, and community and economic development. The 16-17 revenues reflect an increase of 6.9% from the current year budget, however, only a 3.9% increase from the current year projections. The fiscal year 17-18 budget revenues reflect an increase of 2.5% from the 16-17 budgeted revenues. In general, these revenues reflect the growth in our local economy. Some of the highlights are that business registration increases are growing based on the trend over the past few quarters. And as I'll mention later today during my department presentation, we just recently implemented business registration software, which allows us to track our registrations and renewals in a much better way, as well as give businesses the opportunity to pay online, which is going to increase our revenue long-term. Charges for current services show a slight increase in fiscal year 16-17, primarily due to the time due to the timing of plan check services related to development. The current year budget assumes development fees from large-scale projects, including Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, and the Landmark Hotel. Also included in this category are charges for recreation services. And although the development activity is high this year, the projections are a little below budget, and this is due to the closure of the adult center and the subsequent cancellation of classes and programs in that facility, the elimination of the junior high athletics program that we had previously planned for, and reduced enrollment in the adult sporting leagues. Fiscal year '16-'17 includes enhanced programming from the remodeled facility and development fees associated with large projects such as Windy Hill and an additional proposed digital billboard. Licenses and permits reflect a decrease of 16%. And again, this is due to the timing of large development permits. The timing and size of these permits can vary greatly from year to year, and as such, this category can also vary. You know, staff works very closely to try to use the crystal ball to determine when these permit revenues are going to come in, and so we do our best to try to figure out when the development's going to come forward. Other revenues include cost reimbursements from other agencies, donations, and other miscellaneous receipts. The budget in this line item reflects a decrease due to the reduction in cost reimbursements from the successor agency, as the successor agency and the activities with the former redevelopment agency start to wind down. Property tax increases are based on general assessment rules and information provided by our third-party consultants, HDL. Sales tax reflects increases based on the latest trending information and also includes revenue from the new building and construction retail businesses in town. Transient occupancy taxes reflect increases based on the last six quarters. We've seen a steady decline in hotel revenues, as well as additional revenue from the new hotel, which will rely greatly on the timing of the construction and when that's complete. Other uses of money and property reflects our rentals and investment income. These increases also reflect lease income from an additional proposed digital billboard. And vehicle and lieu revenues are based on information provided from the county comptroller's office.
Matt, did you have a question on this slide, or? Okay, I didn't. If you want to.
Go ahead, please.
The sales tax jump seems pretty significant. How confident are you in that? And is that reflective of just the general economic trends, or is that, I know there's proposed car dealership in town and other things like that, but, you know, you have, what does it, it looks like about a 15% year-over-year jump in sales tax revenue, so?
I think if you look at the projections, it's not as high. But we have the additional businesses coming in, so we'll have a full year of OSH, we'll have the Lingso, yes, and the car dealership. And we work very closely with our third-party consultants. They track our revenue and they track the trends in the businesses, and so they feel very comfortable with this number as well.
Okay, and then on, you said the digital billboard is under the other uses of money and property line item?
Yes, it's a lease revenue that we receive.
And so FY 2018 assumes the additional digital billboard above and beyond what we have today, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then on TOT, we, is FY 2018 assume fully realized Landmark Hotel TOT? Because I thought our assumption was that there was a subsidy being included in that agreement. And so maybe it all comes in as revenue and then goes out in a different way. Is that the way to think about it, or?
So this includes that the hotel is fully running and it's up in, includes a full year of TOT from the new hotel. That's what that is.
All right. Okay, great. Bob?
Question I had is, was other uses, we budgeted $1,006,000, but we actually hit 2.7. So that's one question, where we're estimating 2.7, you know, for this current year. So that's a huge number for me. And then, then we dropped down, I know we increased from the revised budget, but we dropped down from actual 700,000. So that's my question. Where are all those numbers flying around?
So the other uses of money and property includes a one-time payment from the billboard based on their revenues. So we get a revenue share, and so that's included in there.
Which one is it included in?
Other uses of money and property.
What line, what column?
Projections.
Okay, so that, so in the 2.7?
It's included in there.
Okay, so we didn't get $1,000,000 from the billboard, though?
No.
No?
And there's also revenue from, during the year, we had some lease revenue related before we sold the landmark property.
Okay, all right, I'll buy into that. And then that disappears, the lease disappears.
Lease disappears as.
But billboard doesn't disappear, but we still drop 700,000.
The billboard doesn't disappear, but we also receive lease revenue from the Inns of America site, and we're projecting that to go down a little bit.
Well, again, we're going to go down $700,000.
Oh, and then we had the one-time Inns of America payment to extend the lease.
How much was that?
750,000.
Thank you. I knew there had to be some wild card in there somewhere.
You found it, Bob.
Thank you. Tracy, you're not going anywhere.
Thank you, Bob.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, so this bar chart reflects the revenues for both years as a percentage of total. You can see the property and sales tax account for approximately 20 million or 55% of our total revenue. So I'm going to move on to the general fund expenditures. So this includes all of the recommended budget additions that each department will be discussing in more detail during their presentations. The fiscal year '16-'17 budget expenditures reflect an increase of 4.5% from the current budget and an increase of 3.3% from the '17 to the '18 budget. So salaries and benefits have been funded at 100% based on all current known MOU provisions. Pensions have been budgeted, Bob, to your point, on, based on current calpers rates and the projections that they've given us to date. Right now, our annual obligation for unfunded liabilities is 1.1 million for our miscellaneous employees. And every year in November, we get a new actuarial statement from them that adjusts it as needed. Other post-employment benefits have been funded at approximately $850,000. This represents 100% of the annual obligation for our retiree medical benefit and 60% of the annual obligation for our longevity benefit. Our current pay-as-you-go model is, we pay about $500,000 for both of these benefits per year, but we're starting to put in additional money toward, into the trusts to pay for future expenses, and that's being funded with 250,000 of our unfunded liability reserve. So we're in the process of completing our actuarial study. We're hoping to have that done in the next month or two. Legacy obligations relate to the pension obligations from the former Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department and the former police department. The annual obligations associated with both of these total 1.9 million for fire and 1.2 million for police. So once we get our new actuarial study from, related to OPEB, and once we get the new reports from calpers in November, we're planning to bring a complete review of our unfunded liabilities to council for discussion.
I, did you have a question, Ron? Yeah, sorry, Ron has a slide on first.
Rebecca, does somebody just walking in cold off the street, and they saw that slide a couple back that shows budget, projected budget revenues of 37 million plus in 2018, and then they look at the expenditures and they see 39 million. How do I explain that to them if they ask me?
So.
Someone will.
What we don't show here is the transfers in and out. So we have transfers coming in. If you remember my first slide where you see all the other funds, the other funds, as part of our comprehensive overhead allocation study, pay money back to the general fund for services that the general fund provides to them. So, for example, the sewer fund has to pay, you know, right-of-way fees as well as pay for city overhead expenses. So there's a pretty large transfer in that comes in that covers the difference. And that's actually, you can see that on attachment one in the summary, in the packet.
Okay. Matt?
So, looking at this chart here, when we look at capital outlay, those numbers, you know, relative to all the other numbers, look anemic. But I'm assuming that that's because we're just looking at what comes out of the general fund for capital outlay. If we look at capital outlay, it's a little bit like what you're talking about with transfers in and transfers out. What we spend on capital outlay is far greater than these numbers that show here.
This is general furniture and fixtures in the departments in the general fund. When you start talking about true infrastructure, that comes out of a different fund, our capital fund, and we'll be going through that in great detail next week.
What might help when we, you know, kind of like what Ron's talking about, somebody pulls this off the shelf at the library and looks at this and gets the same gut-level reaction that I do, is like, what? We spend this much on people, but we only spend this much on, you know, to someone paying their property tax things. So that's why the potholes in front of my house, you know? Having an asterisk here on this particular line that, and then something that explains that we're spending, you know, something that explains something to the effect of what you just said, that this represents capital outlay on, you know, I don't know, somehow highlighting it so that if somebody, again, pulls this, the budget off the shelf and sees this, they understand that's not really our capital outlay. That's, that's capital outlay out of the general fund, which might, like you said, is paying for furniture, but not capital outlay for street improvements and other things that get done.
Yeah, that's why, if I may, I'm going to go back just to this slide. That's why I included this slide, is that you can see the capital funds, there's a number of them.
Right.
And, you know, when you look at the, at the city's structure, the general fund is just the day-to-day activity. When you talk about long-term infrastructure projects, it all goes into those capital funds.
I just don't know, though, that someone would put this slide together with the other one and come up with that thought.
I understand.
Yeah, I agree with Matt. Fund accounting is, is not normal. Everybody just has one checking account in their house, maybe two. So, I mean, I think he's right. Depending on how, you know, you do this, the same thing I'd come up with, I went, what? And same thing Ron came up with, but then I know there's transfers in, but we're in it. So, anyway, thanks.
I think those are great suggestions for Citizens Academy that's coming up in the fall.
And we'll make sure those are reflected in the discussion sections of the budget, particularly the executive summary, which, you know, quite honestly, is what most people would look at in the budget document.
Rebecca, where, when is a good place to talk about general fund reserves and economic uncertainty reserves? Is that later in the presentation?
It's coming up, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So I don't think I touched on the operating expenditures. They've been increased for any of the recommendations, as well as a general CPI increase of 2% and a little more than that for known contract increases. You know, we have some large professional services contracts with public safety and such, so we've added those in there as well.
Could you speak to why the projections were so below the 2016 budget?
So there were some operating expenditures related to professional services, related to Black Mountain, that we didn't end up spending all the money on. There were some legal fees that, and these are projections, so as we finish up the next two months, I mean, these, these numbers may increase. The actuals will, will reflect what actually comes through.
Okay, so you think mostly the fact that Measure V didn't pass and then some associated legal fees?
Yes.
And that was essentially $1 million, or close to $2 million, it looks like?
And, well, there's the, there's other professional services that we accounted for, it's the timing of things. So like our actuarial study is kind of, going to fall into two years, so it's not all going to be charged to this year. We had some, some other professional services contracts in other departments, and I need to go back. I think it relates to the development contracts.
Okay.
As far as the timing is when those development permits hit.
It's broadly just the question of, did that, did those expenses go away, or did they get shifted into the next year? And are we accounting for them?
I think it's a timing issue, but we will go back and review those. Again, those are projections, so they're constantly being reviewed and looked at and analyzed.
Greg over here kicking himself, he's going, ah.
So this chart reflects the recommended budget expenditures again, by department, though. And you can see the public safety is about 48% or 18.7 million, which is a little less than the amount of our two largest revenue sources for sales and property tax. And while properties and sales tax are not specifically allocated for public safety, we use that as a benchmark just to see where we're at. So this table represents the ending fund, estimated ending fund balances for the general fund, incorporating all of the recommendations. So the, as Jeff mentioned earlier, the recommended additions to the budget total 927,000 in fiscal year '16-'17 and 980 in '17-'18. But these increases are offset by $250,000, which I mentioned earlier, which is coming from our unfunded liability reserves to help pay for our other post-employment costs. So this leaves an unrestricted fund balance of 1.8 million and 2.1 million in '17-'18. And as done in prior years, the recommended budget includes transfers of capital reserves to fund capital projects, which we'll discuss in more detail next week.
So, we've got a, we had over 3 million in unrestricted. I don't know how many years, maybe it was lower than that in '15 and '14, I don't know. But now we've dropped to another level, so to speak, the 1.82. Do we anticipate, and again, we necessarily haven't done this, although there is a five-year thing in here, I guess I should have looked. Anticipating that 1.82 is going to be the new magic number that we're going to sort of, I guess it's here, I could look, going to be the new number?
Well, the 3.3 and the projections, every year, you know, we budget conservatively, and every year we have about $1 million in savings due to vacancies throughout the year or timing of professional services contracts. And so although we're projecting 1.8.
I have it, I apologize.
At the end of the year, it's going to be.
It's going to go down. You're anticipating 1.2, 1.3, and 1.2. Okay. That's, I'm sorry.
But every year, as we finish our audit.
I understand.
More goes in.
Yeah. But it's just, it's just, it's dropped to, it's dropped to another level. My point is, it's dropped about $1 million now to another level, when we're going to be floating in that level for a while, it looks like.
Well, what we actually try to do is, when we adopt the budget, we always try to keep that number about 2.
Right.
As we go through the budget year, we always have a surplus, and what you're seeing is not what was adopted in the previous budget.
I understand.
You're seeing what happened.
Like you said, you have $1 million, so it might pop up to 3 again, or 2.2.
So that 1.8, if it was last year or the year before, would actually be over 3.
I understand.
When it's reported as an actual.
I just wanted to see if we were, and again, projected out lowers 1.2, 1.3 level, but with an extra possible million, it will be in the mid-2s at least, something like that. Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that. Do we, just taking note that Jerry Hill tried to pass legislation that would allow the schools to have a higher reserve fund, do we have any kind of state restrictions on what we're allowed to have holding in reserves?
No, we set our reserve policies.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the wastewater or the sewer fund budget. This is Jay Walter's favorite budget. Oh, that's right. So the sewer fund is used to account for sewage treatment, transmission, major replacements and improvements to the city sewer system. Revenues from rates can only be used for sewer-related projects. And revenues are budgeted based on the projected rate increases and the proposed changes to the connection fees that will be presented to council in the coming weeks. Similar to the general fund, salaries and benefits have been budgeted based on all known MOU provisions. The Silicon Valley Clean Water Plant operation expenditures are based on the latest cash flow projections, as well as the SVCW-adopted budget that they adopted only a couple of weeks ago, I believe. Debt service payments are directly tied to the timing of the bond issuance and the payments on the state revolving loan used for capital infrastructure at the sewer treatment facility. These projections are based on the cash flow projections prepared by our third-party consultant. And there's capital projects in here, and those will be discussed in more detail next week.
Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick, can you go back to that other slide? Bond payments, we actually are going to pay 2.7 million, and we thought we were going to do 4 million?
It was the timing of when the bonds were refinanced.
So it's not so much that we miscalculated, it's just the, the way the cycle hits?
There were some delays in actually getting the bonds approved. You have to go through multiple agencies, and I think they had projected that they would go through in March, and it was closer to November before they were sold.
Okay, thanks.
Matt?
So I have a question about the history of the estimated ending fund balance, because we had a, we've got the 1.7, but we're projecting at 3. And by the time we get to '18, we're And by the time we get to 18, we're projecting at 4.2. And that troubles me, because, you know, we've put great payers at a lot of pain in order to go through the improvements and so forth. You know, the rates have gone up, and we had that chart a while back where we're looking at the graph and how it went up. And we were trying to, for the future, limit fee increases to about 2% to 3% over the next 10 years or something. So, the trouble I'm having is, you know, we're putting people through that pain, and especially, you know, people that are on a fixed income or getting close to it, and that's a good percentage of our population. Yet, we're sitting on $4.2 million, and that just doesn't sit well with me. So, why are we doing that?
So, there's a couple of things involved. One is the cash flow projections and the timing of the debt. So, and the timing of the capital projects. So, if those, those, when we set the rates, and Jay can, can speak to this as well, but when we set the rates, we're projecting that these capital projects and the debt is going to hit at a certain time. And if those get delayed, we increase the rates and we start building balance that we can also use toward our capital. Now, there's also debt covenants that we have to maintain a good ratio so that we maintain our debt covenant. And, what's the ratio? Yeah, I don't have the ratio in front of me, but we have to maintain a certain level.
So, historically, where have we been? Is this, is this 1.7 actually low because of the things that have been going on? If we look back in prior years of, you know, if we go back 10 years and look at that number, where's it been?
Rebecca, I could speak a little to that, being on the board. And I didn't mean to take Jay's spot, but what, when I, when they planned out the plant and all the improvements to do the plant, they're right now about a year and a half, if not two years, behind. So, the numbers that were like 1.7, and when we did the increases in the rates, we, we're working on the old rules that was going to be done by now. But it's extended out. I think what you'll see in '19 and '20, you'll see these numbers drop down because this, this balance dropped down because we've already, we don't have to raise our rates as much, right, Jay? Because we already done it. So, it's going to be, it's going to be, this, this balance, I think, at least I would project it would go down in the, in the future years.
I would like to see that, because, again, my, my concern is we're sitting on 4.2 million.
I understand, I get it. I'm just trying to explain why the, why the thing looks, looks so high, because the, sort of the old rules or the, what, what was planned out, it has Silicon Valley Clean Water was X, and what reality is, is Y. So, we can get that, we, I can try to get some of those.
It's an agenda item for our next council meeting. It will be to talk about sewer rates, so.
Very good.
Yeah, and, and long-term cash flow projections as well.
I appreciate the answer.
One other question on that, Bob. Does that mean that they're waiting for a big bill to come in? They're going to spend down that money?
Well, yeah, what happened was the, the rates, it was going to go like this, and then it was probably in '17 or '18, and then it was going to go like this for the cost, for the, all the, all the outlays. And now it's, it's, we've, we've gone a little bit flatter, and yet in '19, '20, it's going to hit instead of '17, '18, so to speak. So, it's coming, but we're, that's why we've got this reserve built up so that we're not going to be, we're not going to have to raise our rates, I don't think, 15%, 20%, like we had to do that one time, because we've already built it in. So, we're going to, we have the money ready to go, and then, then it's going to drop down. But we, in a couple of more years is where the big year is going to be. We have to do that big 60-inch pipe, but Jay will get into that next week. But it's just, it's timing, it's all timing.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
Okay, so these are the special revenue funds. These are used to account for revenue sources for which expenditures are restricted by law or administrative action. The special revenue funds include the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDS, police grants, and library tenant revenues. Revenues for NPDS and police grants are fairly fixed and therefore don't change much from year to year. We just increase by a CPI. However, the library tenant revenues can fluctuate based on the number of tenants who are leasing the building. Operating expenditures reflect a decrease from the current year, as the current year included one-time grant expenditures for license plate readers the council approved earlier this spring. And that came from the police grant fund and the purchase of an electrical panel at the library. So, staff's not recommending any changes to the operating funds at this time. There's two capital projects related to the library that will be discussed in more detail next week.
Yeah, Matt?
My question is not really on this chart, although I did notice a typo, "special" is spelled wrong, but.
Thank you.
I just noticed that, just now. Because you said these represent revenue funds that are restricted, it made me just think if, if there's, not to create more work, but if there's any way of, you know how we have things that are expected of us, but aren't, we have to pay for, unfunded mandates? Is there any way to, in our budget, break those out or have estimates on those, what, what those are? That, you know, these are the things that we have to do. You know, we have to do this certain project for whatever, and it's, it's mandated, there's no revenue for it, it has to come out of our general fund or whatever. Do you see what I'm saying? So that we could see what that trend is and what, what's going on? Because something like that, you know, a number like that could be helpful when, you know, we go sit down and talk to Kevin Mullen or Jerry Hill or somebody and say, hey, you know, this is what you're doing to our city. And especially being that they came from our experience of being council members, they might be, you know, be a good ear. But to have that actual data, you know, could be helpful as opposed to just, well, we know this happens, but we don't know exactly what it looks like.
I think that's going to come up next week in the capital, because we have a lot of capital that we need to fund based on certain requirements that we don't have the money for in the dedicated funding sources. So, for example, street resurfacing, and I don't have the number off my head. Jay, Jay probably knows, but we have a, a large number, a large amount of money we need to spend on street resurfacing, but gas tax revenues are dropping. So, the revenue source isn't there, so we have to find funding from other sources, such as the general fund or reserve savings.
Again, as a communication device for us, and again, for somebody that might pull our budget off the shelf, to be able to see that and have it identified could be useful.
Might be something that we can look at, you know, maybe including a paragraph on in, in the budget summary that, that we put together that just has, you know, because that sounds like that's probably more what you're looking for than like a table or, you know, something that might be more complicated and cumbersome to put together.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the internal service funds, these are used to account for special activities performed by a designated department or other departments on a cost reimbursement basis only. The internal service funds include our workers' compensation program, our risk management program, and our longevity benefits. So, revenues and expenditures related to the insurance programs are relatively the same year-over-year. But we've increased it approximately $217,000 in our longevity benefit to reflect the additional transfers coming in from the general fund, as well as the additional projected payments into the trusts. These have been, you know, as I mentioned before, it's been funded by our general fund reserve that was specifically set aside for this purpose. And again, a new actuarial study is currently underway. We're hoping to have that done soon, and it will be included when we do the review of the unfunded liabilities. So, I think this is the slide Cameron you were referring to, is the reserve balances. So, this is the recommend, this is the reserve balances for all the recommended budgets for fiscal year 1617, for just the operating funds. These, under GASB 54 Presentation for Fund Balances, we break them into several categories. Unassigned is immediately available for use. Assigned balances include amounts set aside for specific purposes. The city manager is authorized to assign balances. And included in the general fund are assignments for, there's 3.7 million for unfunded liability, 5 million for capital infrastructure, and there's 8 million of strategic property acquisition in there. Our committed balances are those that have been committed by council via resolution. That would mean a resolution is required to use those balances. In the general fund, these include the economic uncertainty reserve. There's also a portion of the strategic acquisition reserve that's included in that. And once we finish our year-end, we're going to take, there's a portion of the strategic reserve that's assigned and a portion that's committed. And once we complete our audit, we have to determine which goes into which category.
Can I ask you, if, is that a good stopping point to ask some questions? Or did you want to say anything further?
No, that's fine, because the non-spendable are restricted, or you can't touch those, basically.
So, I, the question that I wanted to ask is, and sorry, I saw your light on, but let me ask a question, then I'll kick it over to you. Is broadly speaking, I think where, where I'm at is times are good, so we should be putting aside a little bit of extra money for when times are bad. But it's, and I know that the way in which we do all of our fund balances makes it very complicated to be able to show that. So, I'm, I'm hoping you can help me. And because the, you know, I think you just said that the economic uncertainty reserve is rolled up into this line item called the committed deployable with council action.
Yes, it's 10% of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay, so, and has that been the policy? Is that the policy that's on the books right now? It's a 10% economic uncertainty reserve?
It's a 10%, but also included in the policy is, at some point, we like to increase that to 20%. So, maybe this is the year that we start having those discussions that if we have, at the end of the year, once we have our audit complete and we know what our actual savings are, that we look at maybe increasing that.
I, I would like to, at least for this council member, talk about increasing the economic uncertainty reserve. And the reason is, is because I note that increasingly a larger portion of the city revenue is on things that are generated from economic activity. So, if we have digital billboards, and the market is really great for digital billboards, and we're generating a lot of revenue, or we have, you know, more retail, or we're, you know, getting TOT from hotel rooms, well, if the economy changes significantly, you know, the assessed home value stock may, may be relatively flat, but things like hotel room vacancy may go up immediately, or, you know, availability of inventory on digital billboards may drop precipitously. So, I, I think I would be in favor of, of moving that economic uncertainty reserve up at least a few percentage points above the 10%. Is that something that is articulated in the budget document? Or is that a separate council resolution? What's the right vehicle to do that?
We actually have a separate council resolution that adopted the fiscal policies. And in that, it talks about the reserve. We include it in our budget document just to have it in one place, so everyone, the public, can see it. But it was a separate action the council took, and it defined the economic uncertainty to be at a minimum 10%, but with it increasing to 20% over time.
And one other thing I'll just note, which is, I said on the library board, we had a very recent discussion about economic uncertainty reserves for the library board, where the library board was running at 20%, but we looked at what the, kind of the federal recommendation is. And I believe it's somewhere north of 15% in terms of economic uncertainty. Are you, are you aware of that, or?
You know, I'd have to go back and, and check.
Okay.
We, we typically do surveys to see what other agencies are at. And I think a lot of the agencies are between 10% and 12%, but I can go back and, and get that information.
All right, well, I, I just wanted to see, I don't know, Matt, if you had a similar, if you wanted to talk about this, you go right ahead.
Couple of comments. One, I think to Cameron's point about having certain revenue streams that, as he said, you know, it's, it's a little bit like when you're investing in the stock market. You might have some high-risk stocks that, you know, could gain a lot and could also lose a lot. And then you have other things that are more stable, maybe pay a dividend and so forth. This is a similar game, where you have certain revenues that are more stable, like property tax. But then you have other revenues that could go, be screaming when the economy's good and not so much when things are slowing down. And I think the, the way to deal with that, or at least I would like to see some kind of tie-in, is things equally that we're spending on that are stable, that come from, that are paid for, if you will, you know, it's, it's, money is, is not fixed. It's in a pot, you take out what you want. But still, looking at it as though we spend here based on our stable income, we spend here special projects and that kind of thing based on income that's coming in at the time. And then also slipping some of that money, as Cameron's talking about, into reserves. Just one more editorial from me on, on reserves, as you can see from before. With the sewer fund, I, I don't like us sitting on too much money. I think we have to have a reasonable and a reasoned, reason, a reasoned approach to having reserves that we can defend to the public, because that's their money. And if it's sitting in our bank account, it's, means it's not sitting in theirs. And, and, you know, average Joe homeowner also has needs for reserve funds, if you will, for rainy day things, and, and, you know, so we have to realize where that money's coming from. And to that point, I think one, to, to give a reasoned approach, you know, I was just at, I reported at the last council meeting, I was just at the last OES, Emergency Services Council. And we have to, and as Jay knows, we have to develop a, an addendum to the countywide hazard response plan. And I think in there is where we could find reason for some of our reserve funding. Because if a hazard happens, if, you know, earthquake, flood, whatever, if we have certain things in our plan, we will be eligible to get federal money. If we don't, we won't. So, that's why that plan's very important. But even when federal money can become available, there's still a time period in there where there's immediate costs that need to be taken care of, and that would be on us to spend that money out of our reserves. And so, I think those are the kind of things that we need to identify. And then we have reason to say to the public, we're holding on to this money, because if we have an earthquake, we're estimating that we're going to have to spend this much money on, you know, repairing water lines so that you get water to your home or sewer or whatever, you know, whatever it is, so.
So, I wanted to check with Bob and Ron and see if you guys are interested in, in this budget cycle bringing the reserve above 10%?
I didn't mean to. I don't have a problem with that. And, and just speaking back to Matt's point, historically, we could go back to, you know, the, the early 2000s, or not the early, but I guess the, when we came, when I came on, you know, we're beyond four years, and we're going through heckin' high water here, and we were having to draw all kinds of stuff down. You might want to go back and take a look and say, hey, these are terrible times, and we had to draw down our reserves. And, and those are, those are actual things that happen, to, to give that, to give your thing buttress. Yeah, I don't have a problem in good, in, in raising that a little bit. And again, combining it with the reality of why we, why we have to have it. Because if we have another recession or another situation, not if, it's going to happen sometime, we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out how to balance this thing. And the, and the money, the budget's going to be a lot higher. So, you're absolutely right. It's going to be millions of dollars more than it was when we did it. So, it's, I, I think it's a good idea to look at and see what the balance is. There's got to be a balance. You can't just say, oh, we'll do the 25% or, because that's a great number. You got to keep looking at it each time, each, each, each year, so.
Insurance industry is famous for reserves. No, I, I agree with Cameron and Bob. I, to me, it would be more difficult to explain not increasing a reserve than, or, than, you know, having a, a low reserve. I mean, if we have the opportunity to, to have a higher reserve, I, I have a hard time seeing the downside, because like Bob says, you know, we're, more expenses, more exposure. We've lived through some pretty difficult economic times in the last 10 years as a city. And I just think that it makes sense, even if it's a modest increase. You know, we can draw it down later, or, you know, as, 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 you know, things become necessary. But, yeah, I, I agree. It'd be a good idea.
Just have to have some justification why we do it at that time. Jeff, do you want to make some comments?
Yeah, just real quick. I tend to look at our reserves more from the totality rather than a specific category. So, I think when you do that, you can see that our reserves are actually quite robust. But I very much understand and agree with the sentiment of the city council. So, one of the things, as Rebecca mentioned, is we were planning on actually adding some money to some of these reserves in the fall, once this fiscal year, the books are closed, and, and we have some savings from this year. We were planning on adding that then, which is something we typically do. The other thing we can also take a look at is moving some of this assigned and deployable with city manager direction reserves into the economic uncertainty reserve, which can only be released with council authority. So, we'll kind of take, I think, a combined approach, look at this as we move forward for this fiscal year for you.
And that, that would be great. And I mean, for me, I'm, I'm happy to take a staff recommendation from you guys as to what you And I mean, for me, I'm happy to take a staff recommendation from you guys as to what you think would fit within the budget. I think the question is, do we want to couple the budget adoption with an uptick in what the policy is? And so for me, I would. I don't know what the right number is, but I would like to see that when we address the overall budget. Matt, did you?
Yeah, just one more question. I am wondering, with the, going back to the OES deal, and the appendix that we have to provide, does that include, when we look at risk management like that, or hazard potentials? Is there an element of where you have to apply numbers to it, budget numbers to it?
I'd have to refer to, is it Jay, are you?
Don't know.
It looks like the fire chief had to step out, so we'll find out.
Okay. Because you can see where I'm going with that. That's, again, it adds justification, which I think is important.
Okay.
I believe that completes my presentation, and
We'll see if there's any questions.
And after this, we were going to move on into the departments, so.
Okay, that sounds good. Any, yeah, exactly. Any further questions? Any question, any public comment? So why don't we take a
One quick thing, this is not so much for you guys, but just for the public, just a reminder that after this part of the presentation, we're going to be talking today about the city council budget, the city manager budget, the city attorney, the city clerk, administrative services, police and fire. Next Friday will be public works, parks and recreation, community development, and the capital budget. So for folks that are watching, or are planning on coming, or are here today, just wanted to be clear for them. So, thank you.
Okay, that sounds good. Let's, let's take a little recess and reconvene at 11:20.
Ms. Peterson.
Good morning, Council. My name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. And before you, I have two different departments all representing, your own department as well as the city manager's department. So let's get started. First slide shows the recommended budget for fiscal years seventeen and eighteen. And just very quickly, the revenue sources, it's 100% from all city funds, and the major expenses are salary and benefits and professional services expenses. And I wanted to make a note that professional services includes dues and memberships, your grant program, your competitive grant program for nonprofits, things of that nature. So it isn't necessarily just professional services. Major services that the council undertakes is legislative activities to support San Carlos, policy establishment direction, today's budget, the whole budget process, the establishment of the budget, and the oversight to ensure fiscal sustainability. Council serves on various regional boards, and they also serve the community through active engagement. Major accomplishments from the last year include increasing engagement with the community, the landmark hotel site groundbreaking, the Wheeler Plaza development commencement, working on various solutions to the parking issues in the downtown, lowering the speed limit on Holly and Old County roads, allocating more funds for police services, and joining Peninsula Clean Energy to offer the community more options for electrical services that are greener. Other accomplishments include leadership to conserve both water and energy, which we've been doing a terrific job, and completing storm drain improvements that resulted in no flooding even though it was an El Nino year. So you'll see these key performance measures throughout everyone's budget presentations. This is the, it's a little bit misleading as it says fiscal year 2016 projected, and these numbers actually were taken from the survey, the community survey that was conducted in February. So it shows how the community is feeling that the city listens to them, how they feel the value of their tax dollar satisfaction, and also the trust with the city. The budget recommendations are as follows: to increase community engagement by adding two additional outreach events annually. Examples of these will be the upcoming Earth Day, which is for tomorrow, also the police, well, it's a public service fair, public safety fair, excuse me, that will be held in October. And also, council provides currently 27,000 in grants to local nonprofits. Council has the authorization to, of course, increase this or decrease this, increase or decrease at their discretion. It has been changed a little bit this year. It is now a competitive grant program, so the council will set a maximum amount of grant funding that's available, and then the various nonprofits would apply for the grant money. The goals for fiscal year 16 through 18, these were taken from the strategic plan, the planning sessions which were held both in February and March. It includes encouraging multifamily housing along transit corridors, identifying and planning for strategic infrastructure improvements and maintenance, parking improvements, more public outreach, social media, facilitating open communication, and sharing information. Also, providing high-quality, stable, and cost-effective public safety services, and identifying, planning, and completing strategic traffic and safety improvements. So that is your budget in a nutshell. Any questions?
Thanks, Tara. So in general, as we go through these, I think maybe let's try and break. First, do questions of staff and clarifying the presentation, and then if there's direction or discussion, we can do that kind of second. So Bob?
When is the, when are the guidelines or the timing for the nonprofits? What is that, when is it going to be?
Well, once council has an adopted budget and July 1st comes through, they'll be able to apply then.
Okay, and there's a timeframe or a week or a month they have a period of time to apply, or?
There's a timeframe in there.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Don't we have a new process for that?
Yes, a new process, and we're going to get a copy to you so you can see what the process is. It's being handled through the Administrative Services Department.
And when does that begin? Does that begin after July 1st?
Correct. That's when the money will be available.
So nonprofits that want allocations or distributions apply at that time?
That's my understanding. Would you, yes? We'll do a call for grant applications.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Can you go back to the performance measures for a second? So this is just a general comment, and I know that it's very difficult to do this for the city council budget. But in general, you know, what I, what I, for me, what I would like to see, and this is just feedback to the staff on the process, is that when we're putting performance measures that we say, okay, well, we're spending a quarter million dollars on city council budget, and then that's tied to some performance measure. Where in this case, they're totally decoupled, right? So it's silly to say like, oh, well, if we doubled the city council budget, then, you know, the residents who agree that the city listens to them would go up or down. And so I just think, I think it's interesting information, but I don't see it as necessarily a performance measure that's tied to the budget. And not just, it's hard for the specific department, but as we go through, if I start to sound like a broken record on that, it's really just because I want, I want to try and make sure that we're quantifying measures that, that the decision to increase the budget 10 or 20% or decrease it would impact that measure, and that we can think about it in that way. So. And Ron, did you have an additional, or your light was still on?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in terms of any other additional questions? So any direction to staff, any folks happy with the recommendation?
Is this the time where we would talk about potentially changing that number?
Absolutely. This is the time.
Since we're liable to have more nonprofits applying, I think we ought to have a discussion on increasing that amount, that we would have at our discretion. I'd like to find out, you know, if there's some consensus on that, and if so, by how much?
Through the chair, what was it, Tracy, or what have we been, I think, it seemed to me that it was like $10,000 to $15,000 in the past, then it went to 20, now it's 27? But I know it's 27 now, but wasn't it in past years lower than that? 25?
In past years, it's been between 20 to 25.
Really? Okay. Even in the tougher years, we still did that? Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't, you know, I mean, then it's almost like wordsmithing, but I don't mind talking about it. But to me, the staff came up with this number, I, whatever, I guess they just decided to raise it by four, three or four percent, or whatever it was, and that would be the regular cost of any of these programs that we have, any expense we have, they raised by three or four percent. So to me, it just fits into the, into the, into the, to the line. So I don't necessarily, I think it's, I think it's part of an expense. I don't think it's a, it's a separate special item, per se. So I think it's, I don't mind it going up a few percent each year, but I don't know if we're going to go higher or lower. That's just my opinion. So.
Well, my thinking on it is that we're going to have requests that are going to change from year to year. Maybe it'll be lower one year, maybe it'll be higher the next, maybe they'll, there will be new groups that want, that are going to request grants. And we don't have to, you know, we don't have to spend all the money. We could keep some of it in. I realize that, but maybe there are some years where, you know, the requests aren't there. I just like to have the flexibility of it.
To me, I've always felt rather uncomfortable doing grants, actually, because, you know, nonprofits, you know, they sell a product in a way, and they should go to the public and to businesses and private institutions to raise their funds, not us who deal, we deal with the public's money. If the public wishes to give money to a nonprofit, they will. It shouldn't be done through us. And I think by increasing it, we just become, if it's there, you know, then, not to put negative connotation on it, but it's like when you put out, you know, like me, I put out bird seed in my front yard. So the more I put out, the more the squirrels come around, the more the birds come around, you know, because I put it out. If I stop putting it out, they go find their seeds someplace else. And I think we are the same way. If we have the pot of money, it becomes an attraction. And I don't personally want that attraction. I would, like I said, I don't feel comfortable doling out public money.
I understand. It's a philosophical difference, you know. I mean, there are certain organizations that, in my mind, it would be a wise investment, actually, on our part, because the downstream benefits are sometimes, unfortunately, or fortunately, what you don't see. You don't see the negative outcomes of not contributing to certain worthy organizations that benefit our residents. And so, and a lot of time, that involves youth. And so it's really hard to measure how, what the, you know, what the outcome is of a dollar spent, you know, of a worthwhile program that benefits people that ordinarily wouldn't be, have the opportunity to have that particular advantage. So that's, I mean, and I, Matt, I completely respect your view on it. I just have a different perspective on it.
Well, and it's a push-pull, too. We have it there now, so.
It is. And I do agree that if you raise it, you may have more people asking for more, but, you know, it's up to us. We control the purse strings, and we can decide, maybe one particular cause over another is not, is not worthy of the grant money. I just like to have the flexibility, that's all.
Through the chair, though, we don't, we don't really pick. Don't you guys give us recommendations? We don't go down the list. It's just, I don't remember that. You gave us recommendations, and then we just said yes. I mean, we could change it, but I guess.
We send recommendations to you?
Yeah.
And then you review them and?
Right. Okay. So we're not on the first level of cut. They are. The staff is. Just to make sure everybody's square on this. So, okay.
If I can weigh in, I'm kind of with Ron on this. I think, you know, one of the things I think that defines our city is that we're, you know, very community-minded, and, you know, the ability to give a little bit of money to make, you know, a small event happen, other things can have a big impact on the quality of life for folks. And so I don't have a problem doing it. And I think, I think Matt's point is a good one, and it's something to be aware of. But I, I've always seen, you know, that there's sort of two different types of requests that come in. One is from organizations in San Carlos that are directly impacting folks in San Carlos. And then there's sort of regional bodies that say, hey, can every city kind of chip in? So I'm more attracted to the, like, let's help small organizations that are having an impact in San Carlos. So I don't know. I mean, I don't want to, like, hamstring it too much, but I mean, I would be open, you know, to taking it up to 30 or 35, but, you know, I would want to see, like, that the majority of the money is deployed locally, so.
I hate to throw a monkey wrench in this thing through the chair, but since there's only four of us, maybe we just got to push this to next Friday. And I'm willing, you know, whatever the majority feels. And believe me, I'm on both sides of this. Like I said, I'm with Matt on, that's why I said three or four percent, and that's what the staff raised it. And I certainly understand how giving to certain places that directly impact us is a positive. But anyway, so I would just suggest that we might talk about it next Friday, and then you'd have a vote, and it'd be easily decided, or not easily, but decided.
Jeff, you wanted to mention?
Yeah, I was just going to remind the council that we do have a small surplus built into the budget this year, so you do have a little bit of money that you can assign to, you know, something like this or something else, whatever your priorities are. And then I was going to make the same suggestion, Bob, that, you know, we've got the agenda next week structured in such a way that we can get the fifth council member, Mark's, feedback. And even if for some reason, you know, we ended up with four next week, too, this is just a study session. So if I talked to Mark offline, and he was interested in raising it up, I would know that there were three people who wanted to raise it up, and we'd put that into the budget for next year or not, if he wasn't interested in it. And then also, Cameron, I just wanted to kind of go back a little bit to your point about the performance measure. There are, if you look in the binder, there's a few more performance measures for the city council. City council's a tough one to measure.
Yeah, I totally acknowledge that.
You know, but just as you go forward, we picked a few for the PowerPoint that you're seeing, but in the binder, you'll see in the departments that there are, you know, lots more performance measures that'll be in the budget book.
Great. Okay. Any other direction for staff on this one, or any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
I'm Chris Sedar with Healthy Cities Tutoring. Thank you for your great work in our city, and I completely appreciate the effort that this budget takes to put together and the ebbs and flows that you've dealt with over the years. Healthy Cities Tutoring has been part of that ebb and flow over the years. And here to sort of remind you of the fact that 20 years ago, we were a city program. It was your signature program. And we're very proud of what our city chose as their vision at that time, to bring the community involvement. So we were cut in 2008 during the terrible economic problem that we had in our city. We became a nonprofit. We've been very proud of our ability to sustain our organization as a nonprofit. But we have relied on your partnership, and we appreciate what you have been donating to us, granting to us. And I just don't want you to really lump us into this whole nonprofit category. I know we have to be there now. That's, again, what you voted on earlier this year. But we rely substantially on the partnership from the vision you had 20 years ago. And just so you know, on a personal level, I do work for them, but I have been a volunteer for the last 10 years. It was my first volunteer job. It's been my favorite volunteer job for the last 10 years. And I have met over, now, in the last two years that I've worked with, over 100 volunteers from our community. You know, I have a mother who takes care of her ailing mother and gives up her one hour a week to come work with the kids. You know, I met a business person Monday that works for WizBots and is now going to tutor one hour a week. And those are the kind of people we're bringing in from this community. And I really think you need to remember that, that's part of your core vision for this city.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? All right. Then we will move on to the city manager's office. This is the budget that we cut?
Okay, so this is the city manager's budget, and it'll kind of follow the same way the city council's budget, although we do have here an organization chart. This is our current structure, with the city manager, the assistant, the executive assistant, social media and volunteer coordinator, the senior management analyst, and the sustainability coordinator, the bottom two of which we added this year. For fiscal year 17, 18, we do propose one change in the second year of the budget, which would be a web content manager. We, if, we haven't proposed it yet, but part of the capital improvement projects, we intend to propose a update to the website. And one of the things we think is very important is to keep the content updated and relevant. And so in the second year, after the website is up and running, we would have a part-time web content manager come on board. So the budget, the recommended budget is here for 17 and for 18. Just a slight difference between the two-year, based on just the Consumer Price Index increase. What we do in executive management is we manage the overall city operations and departments. We provide the council with support. We oversee the community relations and engagement, public information, social media, the website. We develop and manage a strategic plan. We manage various special projects and initiatives. We oversee the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Programs. The accomplishments for the last year, we implemented a number of communications initiatives to increase in community engagement. We recorded a number of videos. We issued a number of mailings to the community, including the quarterly newsletter and the postcards. We've expanded environmental sustainability efforts and received some recognition, and implemented several of our Climate Action Plan measures. We've completed a number of projects on time and on budget. We've established the residential parking permit program on the east side. We completed the grant-funded Pipeline Safety Awareness Program. We oversee the city volunteer program, as well as the PGE work on Line 147, and manage the strategic plan objectives that were part of the current strategic plan. Here again is the table which indicates the survey results in the fiscal year 2016 projected column. The high level of community satisfaction with the city services is at 83%. Community satisfaction with city engagements at 84%. Our social media postings are expanding every day, as well as the number of people that subscribe to our e-notify messages. And we also, in our current strategic plan, we have undertaken a number of tasks. And in fact, this number for 2016 projected will be taking on 85 if the council approves the strategic plan that we're bringing to you next month for approval. Budget recommendations. The city needs to contribute towards a commuter shuttle. We've applied for a grant through the TA for, to have a commuter shuttle provide the last-mile service from Caltrain to various businesses on the east side. So there's a matching fund that the city would be responsible for. As I mentioned, the website content manager. We also plan to expand and double the number of newsletters we put out by, so that we can focus one publication a quarter on a particular item. City Hall and Focus video series, we've started recording those, but we'd like to expand that. We think it's a great way to inform the community about a whole bunch of topics, and we'll be putting that up on the TV channel and our website, as well as the city's YouTube channel. The Citizens Academy is proposed to begin in fall of this year. We would like to hold it twice a year, once in fall and once in spring. It would be a nine-session academy that residents would be welcome to join, culminating in a graduation ceremony. It would be an opportunity for the citizens to learn about city government and also network with themselves and city staff. And this is all designed to build the community, to engage them, and we're really looking, really looking forward to this opportunity. And finally, part of the strategic planning items that were discussed back in February was expanding communication services to develop a more cohesive and strategic way of communicating with the citizens. So we would look at having some contract help and support from a communications expert. Goals for the two-year budget cycle would be to continue to effectively manage the city. And I've also listed here the various strategic planning items that council had, included in council's budget. So the housing, infrastructure, parking, public outreach and community engagement, public safety, strategic traffic and safety improvements. And in addition, we'd implement more of our Climate Action Plan initiatives. Questions?
Bob?
Citizens Academy, I know in other jurisdictions, they have things like this, and in fact, they have San Mateo County one, I believe. But people end up having to pay some, are we anticipating that people would have to pay for this, or is this just going to be, the city's going to put it on?
This is going to be free.
Free?
And we'd have it in the evenings, and we'd even feed them dinner.
Oh, you're going to have it in the evenings? Okay. So it's going to be like a three or four-hour, nine times?
From about 6:00 to 8:30 was the anticipated time.
And then have people, have speakers come in to decide, like each department, things like that?
Right.
Okay, all right. As opposed to on Fridays, I couldn't do it, I remember, because it was always on Fridays for the county, that you would go and visit. This is a little bit different. But this is good, because it does deposit money, and people still can learn a lot about the city.
Right.
Yeah, at night class. All right, got it.
Thanks, Bob. Matt?
I'll first start with that one. I don't know if this is really a budget thing, but if we're going to do a Citizens Academy, I would like to see that tied into our policy of people who serve on our Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, and so forth, or various commissions, that, that's a more robust process. You don't, it's not just assumed that you get, you know, thrown on the consent calendar, and it gets approved, that you get to stay on the Planning Commission or whatever, that we encourage some turnover and new blood on our various advisory committees, and making use of the Citizens Academy in that regard, so that we're getting value out of what we're doing.
I mean, we implemented term limits not too long ago. Is that right? You're saying above and beyond the current term limits that we have today?
Yeah, and just call for applications. I think what we, if I'm not mistaken, the process now is if somebody shows an interest in carrying on their term, then we don't necessarily do a call for applications, right?
Oh, you're, oh, right. So no more automatic reappointments, is what you're saying?
That's right. Yeah. I think we should, I guess that would take another look by the city council at that policy, but I would like to see that. The other item I am looking at is this adding of a person to do website content. You know, I remember years ago, going in and talking to Brian Mora about the city doing a website. And, you know, I was told at the time, well, that could be expensive, it's not in the budget, you know, that was the reaction. But soon enough, we were one of the first cities, I think, in California to do a website. And since then, I get the feeling, especially when I go in there with my iPad, which is pretty frequent, we get it recoupled with the keyboard, that those guys are always playing catch-up, they're always chasing the ball rather than, you know, they're being reactionary to many things. And I see a few things in here, you know, the communication services strategic plan item, and just that we're adding this part-time position. Personally, I would, I would like to, number one, know what those guys think about our virtual presence, and really budget for them to think more broadly, and, you know, what are we doing that, what are we not doing that we could be doing? I look at this TV, for instance, and I know so many people, you know, I'm sure Cameron, being who he works for, is aware of this, that the content that people are getting from television versus these things, even watching, you know, it used to be you watched TV programs on your TV. Well, now, you know, your computer, your iPad, whatever, your phone, there's so much that you can get without even having TV. You know, you can order from Netflix what you want and watch what you want. So when does this technology of cable TV and so forth for council meetings and all that we do become obsolete? Let's give those guys a project and, you know, get them going. And so I guess what I'm saying is, rather than always chasing the technology and catching up to it, let's allow our IT department to get ahead of the game and be cutting-edge, and be a city that shows other cities, this is how you do virtual world. So I would like to see a little bit more out of our budget go to that department, because ultimately, when you do things virtually, it can save you money, because you don't need the quote-unquote "brick and mortar" to have a presence.
Okay. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. Yeah, I completely agree, Matt. We actually had that discussion, I believe, at our strategic planning meetings while you were recovering. So glad to see your thinking along the same lines. That was, we had a pretty good discussion about that, and the need to- That was, we had a pretty good discussion about that, and the need to update our website, make it more modern, stay ahead of the curve, which is, I think, is what you're saying, in terms of keeping it update, updated and relevant. So all, complete agreement.
If I may, I'm going a little bit further than that. To me, it's like having nerve endings or not having nerve endings. You, you know, the five sensories, in other words, that you either see and feel and smell things, or you don't. And the way we're operating right now, with the brain that we have back there, I think there's a lot of sensory areas that we're not touching or feeling or smelling, because these guys are being limited in what they're doing. And I would like, so it's a little bit more than just web presence, and I think Cameron, being that he's in the industry a little bit, maybe you understand what I'm talking about?
I do, yeah. And I can share a couple of thoughts, and then Jeff. I mean, I, in general, would like to see more investment. You know, I've said before, I think there's a performance measure here that says, you know, we had 600,000 people visit our website. Well, you know, 600,000 people didn't come in through the city hall doors. So for, from the perspective of a lot of people in town, the online presence is the city. You know, we put $1 million into this room here, but for most people, they don't necessarily see the inside of this room. That being said, you know, the, these things can be expensive, and they have to work into the general flow and operation of the city. And so my question for Tara and for Jeff, you know, I think the philosophy prior to this budget recommendation was kind of every staff member, lots of staff members have responsibility for owning their sections of the website and maintaining the content. And I'm wondering, does this represent a shift in that philosophy, that you want to push the content management through a single individual? And can you talk to us a little bit about the pros and cons of that approach?
Yeah. I'll jump in here a little bit. I love this discussion, by the way. This is very exciting stuff for us. IT, the IT that we have right now, they're basically involved in taking care of the infrastructure technology. They're not what you would call, you know, high-level technology developers, you know, they're not putting it to use.
Consumer-facing, if you will.
Right, exactly.
They're business IT.
Once upon a time, we had a webmaster. We don't anymore. We contract out those services when we need to make big changes to the website. And there's plenty of those services available in the market now, as opposed to, you know, 15 or 20 years ago, when we were starting out. The content manager, in answer to your question, Cameron, the answer is yes and no. Not all the, we don't envision a part-time person can handle all the content and all the maintenance, so it'll be partly, they'll be developing content, and partly, they'll be cracking the whip on the departments to make sure they're developing the content that really only they can develop. You know, just, it would take so much work and effort to have somebody who's not involved with public works developing all the public works content, when public works knows what it is they're developing, what it is they're working on, what the timeline for a project is, all those things. So we need somebody to make sure that they are, in fact, updating the website to say the things that they already know in their heads, and taking advantage of that technology. One of the things the council wanted us to do in the strategic plan was sort of step back and hire an expert to come in and take a look at sort of how we communicate and how all this stuff is working, recognizing that, you know, we don't really have that level of expertise on the staff. You know, the world, as you say, Matt, has gotten very sophisticated, and there's all these really exciting tools and opportunities, and are we taking advantage, and what could we do? So that'll be kind of the first step. And then the council recognized, they didn't need an expert to tell them that they wanted to kind of redo the city's website, that it's dated, it's become a little bit of a dinosaur, a little bit too cumbersome, and that it's kind of failing to be a simple source of information, which they wanted it to be. So we'll have those initiatives going on, and then, you know, as Tara pointed out, until we get the website, while it's under construction, we don't really need the content manager, but towards the end of that process, we'd want to bring that person onboard to help. And as this expert comes in and helps us, I'm sure there'll be a whole bunch more recommendations that we're coming back to you with. That was the idea.
Let me just respond, and then I'll kick it over to Matt. This is general feedback to think about. You know, when we talked about this at the strategic plan, you know, the concern that I raised, and I still have this concern, which is, I think we're doing a lot of the right things. We have a mobile app, we have a website, we have Shape San Carlos, we have a community newsletter, we have e- notify, we have all these different things. But I think there, a lot of them are contracted out to different contractors, they don't share the same kind of look and feel and content, and they're managed kind of separately and differently. And then we have a presence on Facebook, we have a presence on Nextdoor, we have a presence on Twitter, a presence on Instagram. And I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of agencies have a public information officer or communications director or something like that, which we don't have in the city. And we have Brian's role, but Brian is kind of serving two different roles. He's doing volunteer, and he's doing kind of the messaging on social media. And then you're proposing adding a part-time person that would do the web content. And I just wonder if you have kind of two junior part-time positions trying to manage a lot of the messaging for the city, whether that's going to be a recipe for success, versus separating those different roles into somebody who's looking after volunteer and community events and things like that, and somebody else who's really thinking about messaging overall and all the channels, and doing it in a more cohesive way. And so I don't, I'm not that excited about the structure that we have today. That being said, you know, it's also a challenging labor market out there to find people who are really talented to do this kind of thing. But anyway, that's my feedback. I don't know if you want to react, and then Matt, if you had some other questions.
I'm happy to react to it. I think, I think we see this very, very much along the same lines. I would not be at all surprised if, after we get this communications expert in here to take a look at everything that we're doing, if one of the recommendations isn't to create a high-level, you know, management position, to oversee all these types of functions that somebody that brings some expertise to staff. One thing we can say for sure, right, those of us who have been sitting here for more than a few years, is every year, the public expects us to do more of this, not less. So we know that the trajectory on this is going to continue to climb. And I think we've, you know, we're really starting to get to the point where I expect this to, it's almost at some point going to need to be its own department or sub-department in the city manager's office, where you have somebody who's basically dedicated to this full-time. Good news is, we've kind of built the support structure underneath them, but we haven't created that position yet. I think the expert will fill that role initially, to provide us those recommendations, and then we'll be back in front of council probably saying, hey, you know, here it is, do you want to go there or not? It'll be more than a few bucks, I don't think it'll be a bank breaker, but--
And what's the timing on that? And do you want us to approve the kind of measure that, or the suggestion that you have here prior to that kind of recommendation from the council?
I think we'll be back at the mid-cycle a year from now, making some changes in this area.
Matt, did you want to have another question or comment?
Yeah, I won't say a whole lot, given what Jeff just said, but I think part of what you're hitting on camera, Cameron, is, you know, what I would call hub access, that you have a hub that you can go to, and you go there because you want to make contact with the city of San Carlos. And then from there, whether you do that Facebook, Twitter, or whatever you're trying to do, you do it from that hub. And we don't have that right now. And Jeff mentioned about departments providing content, which is good, because they know the proper content. But then, you know, one of the things that everybody likes about Apple, for instance, is that once you have that content, but it's easily accessed, that you just touch the screen and something comes up, and on you go, you know? And it seems intuitive. And I think that's where we fail. We don't have things that seem intuitive. And thirdly, I would just, you know, an example of what I'm talking about, about even getting beyond the web, is, you know, right now, it used to be you walked into city hall, you know, 15 years ago, and the person that did the building department also was sort of the receptionist, right? Now we have nothing. Now we've got the counter that's beautiful, and a lot of people go over there because it's there when they really want finance upstairs, right? But for instance, to be able to walk into city hall, and there's a big touchscreen, and you walk over to it, and, you know, boo-boo-boo, and it tells you where to go, right? We don't have that. And that's, to me, that's where technology is going. And I would like to see this city be, again, one that's more on the cutting edge of those kinds of things, rather than always playing catch-up and trying to run after the ball, as I said earlier.
All right. Ron, did you want to weigh in here?
No, I had, I had a different question.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions on this topic? All right, go right ahead.
All right, yeah. The only thing was, I, on the Citizens Academy, Matt mentioned something about having past commissioners participate, which I think is, is a good job. But my question is really a simple one. Where are we planning on holding this? Would it be here in the council chambers? Would it be in the library?
Actually, we haven't finalized all of that, but it would most likely be in the library, because that's where we could serve dinner, and they can have presentations. There was also some thought of having them, particularly on Community Development Day, maybe visiting a site that's within walking distance. So there was always going to be an activity, as well as a presentation, and a definite time for input both ways.
And I know that part of it, obviously, is explaining how the city works, is also part of it to tell people how they can participate, and how, if they wanted to join a commission, what they would need to do, and what we would expect, and those type of things.
Absolutely. I believe that's thought for day one.
Okay, so that's, because generating the interest is, I think, very important. I think we've all, all of us sitting here have, I've lost count of the interviews that we've done, and sometimes, you know, we wish we had more people to interview. So it'd be nice to really sort of raise the, you know, the quality of the people that are coming in to interview for various commission positions and that sort of thing. And also generate interest for people, future people wanting to run for council. So, yeah, all those good ideas. Thanks.
One last question for me on the, on some of the green measures, under the performance measures in the PAC, you have a line item called Number of Postings on Green Initiatives. What is that? Is that social media postings that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. And so you're proposing like a doubling over the next two years of the amount of, amount of time we're posting? Is that, is that necessary, or what's your thought there?
Well, I just see a trajectory. We're growing, we continue to, there's more and more out there for us to talk about. I'm, for one, I'm constantly retweeting things, if there's things out there that we aren't generating, and I think it's a great way of building up our audience, as well as informing the audience that we do have.
Any other questions or direction on this topic? Any public comment? Okay, thanks, Tara. I think we're ready to move on to the next one.
Good morning.
Hi, Jeff.
Sustained.
Hi, Warren.
Let me see how this works. This is new for me. Well, this is my first presentation as the city attorney, actually, in the budget process with this new program. So, so when you look at the flowchart for the city attorney, it's kind of lonely. It's just me below the council, although I do have a few deputies that assist me. They're not in the flowchart there. So go to the next one. My, the budget, this budget's a comprehensive number, is my understanding. It includes not only the routine retainer, but it includes special projects and some of the hourly work. You can see that there's some revenue associated with the budget, because development projects that my office is involved in, and sometimes outside attorneys, the developer pays for those costs. And then there are some, sometimes there's revenue from fines and penalties that we're able to negotiate through our enforcement. So major services, you're probably aware of a lot of this, but I advise the staff, attend city council meetings, review contracts, participate in the development projects, sometimes with outside counsel, sometimes through my firm or directly with me. And I participate in all the litigation involving the city, whether it's through my office or through outside counsel with A-BAG, who handles our liability claims. Drafting ordinances, we've seen a lot of them this year, I'll be more specific later. Public Records Act and Brown Act compliance. This year, major accomplishment, continued to work on the inline testing of Line 147. We had some issues come up in the past year that required prompt attention, dealing with the CPUC and getting action, which resulted in the line being, pressure being reduced while the inline testing was being pursued. Right now, there are two proceedings at the CPUC that I'm involved in and will continue to be involved in. One is regarding the continued dispute with PG&E and CPUC over the correct operating pressure for Line 147. And the other is the ex parte communications OSC that's presently before the CPUC. Some of the communications at issue were leading up to the CPUC hearing, where the pressure was increased back in 2013. Again, participate, this year's accomplishments, we settled some claims, and we pursued some claims, defended some claims with our, we get a lot of claims, as the council's aware, from, from members of the public, that my office is primarily responsible in dealing You may recall the stockpile debris and the report that I issued. I think that was a significant accomplishment this year, and got to the bottom of some of the confusion that was out there. Brown Act training for new and existing commissioners. There was a not-well-publicized building that was across a public alley in the south part of town, that when it was uncovered, we acted quickly to have the encroachment removed successfully. When I say encroachment, it was complete blockage of the alley. There was a building and storage area in the alley. This year, we had some ordinances, and there was an urgency ordinance, we did handbill ordinance, the formula, urgency and final for formula businesses, environmental purchasing, dog park hours, update on the animal control ordinance, and the prohibition on smoking in parks. I participated with staff and city manager and our outside consultants to do the final deal closing for the, for Landmark Hotel. That was over about a week or 10 days just before we were trying to close escrow, so it was, I think, a significant contribution. Still code compliance. Other accomplishments that are all listed there. Big, big projects that we've seen coming before the council in the past year. The lease extension on Ends of America, I think, was, there was a significant contribution by our office. So our performance measures, these are just some of the performance measures, but they're, again, it was, city attorney is sort of hard to create performance measures, because a lot of it is, I touched pretty much everything that the city needs legal advice on, so we focused on these performance measures, the outside councils that I monitor, and the public information requests. So you can see, PRA requests, or Public Records Act requests, continue to grow. We get, there's two types of them. There's Public Records Act requests from general citizens, and then there's outside Public Records Act requests that sometimes take a great deal of time. There's routine ones, like the newspaper seeking public salaries, those are routine, we have that, those don't take a lot of time anymore. So there's no real changes to the city attorney's base budget. The budget that is proposed has been adequate for the past several years, and I don't think I've exceeded it, except when there was a special need like PG&E. The goals, participate in implementation of all the strategic planning items, drafting of new ordinances. new ordinances, and code updates that sometimes we have cleanup updates. Sometimes the council directs changes to the municipal code because an issue comes up or there's a perceived need to regulate issues in San Carlos. We have some big projects coming up this year, so I'll be continuing to monitor those There's a significant task up ahead, the final two years of the San Francisco Bay Keeper Consent Decree. We're on track for that, to have the consent decree expire, but the goal is with, working with Jay Walters, to make sure that the consent decree expires as scheduled. And then there's a new billboard lease that we're going to be looking at. I'm still going to be active up in San Francisco at the CPUC with line 147 and the ex parte proceedings. And then continue to provide cost-effective and high-quality legal services to the city and city council. So any questions?
Thanks, Greg. Ron?
Yeah, a couple. Thanks, Greg. On the Public Records Act request, it seems that certain cities are faced with what can probably be considered frivolous Public Records Act requests over the years. We've talked about putting those, or automating that, putting them online and allowing people to just search for whatever they wanted. I don't think we're there yet, right? We're working on it? Yeah.
We are working on that.
Assuming for a moment that it was a reality and we had it online, would that, how much would that affect the work that you did or you needed to do on those requests? Would you still need to sort of go through them to determine what is, you know, privileged and what is not?
I think the short answer to that is yes, there would be some that I would still need to review, depending on the type of request. But if we set, the problem that we're trying to address is to create how we store the data so that if we can pre-segregate the privileged information and then we have a 99% confidence that we won't get an inadvertent privileged document released, that's kind of the direction we're trying to go, but it's partially technical and partially legal.
Okay. And then the other thing you mentioned was the new billboard lease. And I thought that could be interpreted two ways. Is it a new lease on the existing billboard or a new billboard lease?
No, it's a new billboard location that we would be involved in a lease.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ron. Matt?
First question is, do we ever take advantage of any internships that are available to get, you know, people that want to go into municipal law and have them working for us for the summer at virtually no cost?
We sometimes, in my office, have interns or paralegals and assistants that help me, but we have not, we don't have an active program to do that. And part of it is...
Are there active programs that we could tie into?
Well, I know some others in-house city attorneys that go to the local law schools and get help during the summer. My policy is that I don't personally, it's my personal preference, and I know people do this, but I don't believe in an unpaid internship. I think interns should be paid something, even if it's minimum wage. I think they should be paid something for their time and the effort they're putting in. But yeah, I'd be glad to look at that. I haven't done it in the past, but there are some of those routine things like the Public Records Act requests, sometimes that might be a way to save some costs.
Municipal code cleanup project?
Yeah, that's true. I could assign, hey, this code, this is the direction the council has, and then they could help do the first cut for me.
So is that something that we would have to, being that your preference is to pay minimum wage, we would have to add to the budget for that?
Well, I think I could talk with Jeff about how that could be structured. It could be that we do it through the retainer or we could do it through some sort of a line item that would be a pass-through or something like that.
I might want to ask that question. Are we interested in something like that?
Sorry, say that again?
You might want to ask the question if we're interested in that as, you know, I don't know, I'm obviously interested in it, but I don't know about the rest there.
I'm sorry, through the chair. Greg mentioned the word he uses is in-house attorneys. If he had an office here, I think I'd be much more into that, but he has his own office. And so I think it's a little bit different animal here with the way we do our city attorney. And so I'm not, I mean, I leave it up to, you know, the council to decide what they want to do. If, like I said, if he had an office, I think it'd be much easier and you just, you know, do it that way. But like I said, I leave it up to him to, as long as things are getting done, I don't, you know, I think it's a preference of the attorney personally. Whatever, whatever you want to do is fine with me, so.
I think the best savings we could get on the Public Records Act issue is try to come up with this technical solution, and we're working on that. As far as, I think the staffing that I, my office has right now is adequate. I have, I have two deputies at my disposal to give projects to. Some are covered under the retainer because they're routine and some are special projects where I don't have time or something like that. And it's just, some of our litigation, code enforcement, some of those things, I have my deputies do that and then...
Part of the reason I bring it up, and this is in some respects addressed to Bob because of the way you put that, is, you know, Jeff knows, I was at Nordstrom's not too long ago and talking to the guy, the sales guy there. And when he found out I was on city council, as we, you know, were just chatting, he said, hey, do you know if your city has any internship opportunities? And I said, I don't know, but I can put you in touch with our city manager. So I did that. You know, I gave the card that the guy gave me to Jeff and it turns, and then the guy ends up writing me and saying, thanks very much, because I guess he was able to land an internship here for the summer. So it's, to me, it's something that could be good for us, but it's also, you know, reaching out to those professionals or people who want to be professionals and giving them an opportunity to do some work and get some experience and build a resume. So really, to me, the question is, is Greg interested in, you know, because that's, he'd have to manage something like that to some degree. And are we interested in a city as giving folks those kinds of opportunities?
For me, it's still the location. If you had an office, they're here, they're in City Hall. But if now they're in his office, then how does that work? And he's got two deputies that he gives it to that are trained lawyers now that are, that's cheap, that's very, should we say, inexpensive because it's covered. So, I mean, that's what I look at.
So I think that I hear, there's two structures to what you're talking about. One would be, from a budget standpoint, that the city would have an intern, that the city would hire for, to help assist me in city attorney-type tasks. The other is to have my office staff appropriately to handle the city, which might include interns. I wouldn't rule it out. And it might include, we have hired law students in the past and things of that nature to help us, or people waiting for their bar results. They're not quite attorneys yet, but they're, they are looking for work. So I think, I'm open to the idea. I think it's not, it's not a bad idea and it's, it can be efficient to have an extra person who can do things at relatively low cost, so. But from a budget standpoint, I think you're looking at, do you want to fund it as a line item for the city or is it something that I should just talk with Jeff about? If there's a need for staffing, then I would talk with Jeff in the next budget round to say, hey, is this person, to change my fee agreement so that there'd be like this line item that we could at low rates charge through somebody?
And if there's projects that could be done and, you know, and would be useful to the city, that, like I said, you know, municipal code cleanup, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And that would be under retainer, so.
Yes. So I, I mean, I think it's a good suggestion, but I also think it's kind of up to Greg. So, I mean, I don't want to direct him to say...
No, and I'm not trying to. I'm just bringing it up as a, yeah.
I did want to ask one other question, which is, if we get hit with a lawsuit and we hire outside counsel, is that anticipated in your budget? Because I know we've, I mean, we've had, we've retained some outside counsel this past year. And is that, if I look at like the, you know, the projections of the operating budget to you?
There is a cushion in the budget to handle unanticipated disputes that we get through where we don't have ABAG, and that's my understanding.
Correct, yeah. And there actually are a couple other budgets that sometimes we have money for that type of thing, like the risk management budget, if it's claim-related where we have money...
That was going to be my other question. When we settle or we're found liable and we pay out, how does, where does that flow through the budget?
Depends on the claim. Most often, it's the risk management budget, which has money budgeted for claim payout in it to a certain amount. And, you know, you can never predict, you know, many years, we don't even come close to spending the money we've got budgeted. And then sometimes you have that one claim that blows your entire budget two times over and we come back to council.
And sometimes we have, we have insurance, so we pay what amounts to the deductible. But if you, but you, but the deductible, in our case, under our ABAG plan is $100,000. So you could have, if you just, by random chance, you have three claims, there's $300,000 potentially that you're spending before the insurance kicks in.
Okay. Did you have?
Yeah, just one more question. You know, for me, I don't do much with the league anymore. When I first got on council, I was going up to Sacramento all the time. And the reason I mention that is because oftentimes I would see Bob, or Bob Lanzone, also in Sacramento, back in the day. And, you know, we get, we get the legislative updates from the league. I get them as emails. But, you know, I also have a job, so I don't have a lot of time to necessarily dig into that stuff. And I'm just, that always concerns me, is how much we, through the city attorney's office, is staying on top of legal changes and things that are going on that Sacramento or even sometimes the feds are doing. And, you know, so I'm looking for, how much are you going to league functions and keeping your ear to the ground on those kinds of things? And do we need to do anything in the budget so that you can do that more if you're not doing it?
Well, I get the same legislative updates you get. And I also, there's two city attorney conferences that are sponsored by the League of California Cities, and there's a municipal law department. One is at the regular league conference that all the elected officials go to. And then there's one that's just for city attorneys in the spring. And that one's actually next week, but this particular one, I'm not going to be going to, but I have access to all the materials. For personal reasons, I couldn't go. But I've gone to every one of them since I've been city attorney. And then part of the update you get includes that some of the materials that we get at the league conference, very helpful. And there's also, you know, it's a small community in San Mateo County. There's, you know, every city has a city attorney and we meet monthly and deal with local issues that affect us legislatively. And we have a pretty active county council's office that is on the regional side of things. And then our local attorneys deal with issues that come up that, and it's, that's actually very collaborative and we learn a lot from that.
So just a comment on that, if I may. I'd like to hear from you more on those when we do the updates from staff, even if you don't have anything to report necessarily, but just so that the public knows and we know, you know, I attended a meeting with the, and, you know, so forth. Just to, it would get, it would add comfort level, I think, to everybody.
I have no problem doing that, sure.
Thanks, Matt. Jeff, did you want to?
I was just going to add, Matt, the city manager's office also does a lot of work in, with the league in tracking legislation too. So we kind of come at it, the same thing from different angles. And the city also maintains a lobbyist on retainer in Sacramento, Amy Brown, who we talk with, you know, several times a year and meet with. And, you know, one of the thoughts I had when you were talking is maybe twice a year we'd have Amy come and talk to the council a little bit about Sacramento. If nothing else, it's fascinating. And she's, you know, a lot of fun, so.
And I, when there's a letter that's proposed to be opposed or if something, I work with staff to get the appropriate language in it and review the bill and see how it impacts us and...
All right. I'm not seeing any other lights on, so thank you very much, Greg. Any, don't see any public wanting to comment? So we are at 12:25. I don't know if lunch is here or not. It is here. So we could, we could take the clerk's office and then do lunch, or we can break for lunch now?
Yeah, about five, 10 minutes moves.
I vote for the clerk and then lunch. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you done?
She at least has to walk to the podium.
I'm going to go like this. We all have any questions?
Can I just say that I appreciate that each department has pulled photos that are representative of their departments? Very nice.
Okay. So I'll make this brief. The city clerk's department consists of two full-time employees, myself and my administrative assistant. This chart shows our recommended budget for the next two fiscal years. You'll see that our major revenue sources really comes from allocations from other city funds. Major expenses really are from salaries and benefits and professional services. Council and city manager support. So our department operates under one program, which is the council and city manager support. And so our major services under that program, we have processing agenda, managing the agenda process as well as supporting council meetings and managing the recruitment of city commissions and facilitating the orientation of our new commissioners. Our city department, our city clerk's department also works with incoming and outgoing mail for the whole city. And we manage the citywide volunteer program. Cameron, to your point earlier, you mentioned how we have that one position in the city manager's office that handles social media and volunteers. So our city manager and assistant city manager really saw the strain that those two kind of different duties put on him. And so volunteer program is really going to slowly start coming back to our department. So the volunteer program, in that program, we handle the volunteer events such as the annual expo and the annual recognition dinner, and also placing individual and group volunteers when they, when they're interested in that. Other major services, we are responsible for administering the city municipal elections. And our department assists council and treasurer candidates through the entire elections process. We are also the compliance officer for the Fair Political Practices Commission. And so the main task there is to ensure timely filing of election forms as well as the statement of economic interest and according to our conflict of interest code. Our department also assists other departments, staff in records searching and pulling those records, as well as, of course, satisfying the public records request. And we maintain the records retention schedule, so that includes, you know, updating that and assisting departments with timely destruction of records. In regards to major accomplishments this year, we worked with the IT department to create an online registry for residents to opt out of receiving visits from solicitors as well as opting out of receiving handbills. And so to date, we have received 250 residents who registered to refuse receiving handbills delivered to their homes. And we have just short of 1,000 residents who have opted out of receiving visits from solicitors. We also had an accomplishment from 2015. We successfully ran an election for two seats on the council as well as the treasurer, and we had a measure behind the ballot. Other accomplishments, our department has always kind of worked closely with the volunteer coordinator. And so we assisted with the volunteer coordinating expo, which is coming up in next Saturday, actually, the 7th. And we have the volunteer recognition event dinner that's coming up in June. So as of last week, we had 297 public records requests. I actually checked that number this morning. We are up to 320. So that's quite a feat for our department of two. This chart shows the key performance measures for our department. Not going to go through all of them, but so I'll just highlight a few. The main one really is that public records request. In 2015, we had 222. And as I just mentioned, we are up to 320. So with two months left in fiscal year 2016, I think that 350 number that we projected, we're going to go over that a little bit. This chart also shows the number of ordinances and notices processed and number of proclamations that we prepared, all of which are, for this year, about the same or slightly higher than what we accomplished last year. And a number of commission interviews that we prepared... that 350 number that we projected, we're gonna go over that a little bit. This chart also shows the number of ordinances and minuses processed, and number of proclamations that we prepared, all of which are, for this year, about the same, or slightly higher than what, what we accomplished last year. And a number of commission interviews that we prepared. We're expecting four for this year, three of which are gonna be coming to you in June. We do not have any additional changes to our existing budgets, and that makes that easy. As far as goals for our department, so in addition to continuing our services that we, we offer, and as well as keeping up with all the increase in public records requests, the two that we will be focusing on are listed up there. The first one being that we're gonna work with all the departments in the city to organize and restructure their shared file folders in order to minimize duplicates on the city, city server, and also to make it easier to identify records that are ready to be destroyed. And our other goal that we'll be focusing on is purchasing and implementing a new agenda and document management system. And with that, we're, we believe that we can offer public, the public greater access to agendas and to our minute, our meetings.
Is that a replacement for e-notifying, or?
No, no, this is, it's your Agenda To Go pack, that, it's, it's that, that system that runs that.
Or e-packets, is that, is that?
No.
Okay, so the, the interface that the public today?
What they see on, when they go to the meetings and agendas page, that's what, what's behind that.
Okay.
Yeah, and as well as, we have a new page.
But that's not e-packets today?
Oh, it's, yeah, I'm sorry, it is, it is e-packets.
Okay, so it's a replacement for, okay, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear the word.
Yeah, so it's gonna make it a little bit easier to search. And also, we have a page on our website where the public can go in and actually go through current ordinances and resolutions that are out there. So, with this new system, I'm hoping that we, we would be able to actually open more cabinets to make it that easier for the public to search records that they're interested in. And that's actually all I have for today.
All right. Matt?
Bob wants to get to lunch, but, so I just have one question, though, is, being that you're, you know, you're a smaller department, you don't really get grant funding, and you've experienced when we've gone through cutbacks and, and, you know, the way we've reorganized City Hall to save money and so forth, it makes me wonder if there's anything in, with your department that you're not asking for, that you wish you could, or you, you know, because you think, well, council will just cut that one down because, you know, they won't want to spend the money. I'm just, so I'm looking to see if there's anything that you're not doing that you'd like to be doing.
Well, I mean, the, the, really, the agenda management system that I just spoke about would really hit a lot of the things that I really want to have, you know, bring forward, such as like voting in council, automatic voting. I really want that to, that, that system to be in place. And to have that in place, we, we need a, a new system.
And that's being ordered up?
That, that would fall together with that, that project that I just mentioned about bringing on a new system.
And so, it is in your?
It's kind of incorporated, yeah.
Kind of incorporated, okay.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. A couple of things on, I think I know the answer to this question, but the, but you showed that the projected Public Records Act request is tracking or trending, you think it's gonna reach 350.
I think it's gonna exceed 350 this year.
Is the long-term trend generally up and up a lot?
Long-term?
Yeah, and in other words, if you look back a year, you go, two years ago, three years ago?
Definitely.
Is it just increased every year?
Yes, yes. Some years, it's really exponentially increased.
The other question I had was, you mentioned Agenda To Go. You're, you're saying that that particular program or app on our iPads will, will change, or you'd like it to change?
The look of it will change. You're, you're still gonna be able to access the agenda on your, on your mobile device.
And then, and part of that, did you say, is this voting system, in other words, we're just, when you call the roll, we're just gonna hit a button?
Yeah.
And it's all, is it gonna show up on the board?
That is my goal, yeah. I, I've seen other cities work it, and it's pretty neat. It's, you can actually see who voted when, and you don't, that the council votes when they're ready to vote. So, but you're not basing your vote and seeing what other people are voting before you.
But Bob, I don't think you can vote from home.
No.
I don't think so.
I just wanted to, along those lines, we, we've had some issues. I've had personal, not-so-good experience with this last year in terms of public comment. And I was at a meeting last week, actually, I was sitting in for Cameron in a Pennsylvania Clean Energy meeting. And on the display board, when a person got up to speak for public comment, a big timer appeared. And everybody in the room could see that. And I don't know, is that part of any program that we could implement so that there, it's on the screen, so that the public, so the speaker can see it, and everybody in the audience can see how much time they have left?
Sounds like a difficult thing to do, so, yeah.
This was a program that I think they had found online. Now, I don't know if it's, might be a sort of a build-out of what you're looking at.
Right, just a countdown timer?
Just a personal, yeah, it's a little, a little countdown thing that would just display on the screens.
Yeah, if the council's interested in it.
The slow clap.
I hadn't thought about that, but that's not a bad idea.
One question for me, anything else?
No, no.
Okay. So, it looks like professional services bumps up $50,000 in 2018. Is that associated with the election?
Yeah, you, yeah. We have a, we anticipate the election, and we put a, put that number in there.
And what do we spend the money on in election years that costs more?
That we do not spend for the non-election years?
More. I looked back, we did it in 2015 as well. So, there's a $50,000 increase in election years in professional services. And the question is, what do we spend that on?
Other professional services amount that we, that we use, the other, other services. So, a, a big one really is the codifications of the municipal code. Every time we have a new ordinance, we have a vendor who helps with putting that into the code. And once they put it into the code, they have to, they clean it up, make sure that everything's okay. And then we have the, putting that, them hosting it onto our webpage.
And so, why, no, okay.
Right. Well, that's, that's kind of just what we, that's our estimate, usually.
What do we, what do we, what do we pay for?
What, what are they doing? Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry. The county for the elections.
To do what?
Right, sorry.
To administer the election?
They, they handle all the backend that are there.
That's all I wanted to know. Okay. Any other questions? Any other direction? Any public comment? With that, let's take, what, 45 minutes for lunch, something like that? Or half an hour? You want, you want to, okay. Okay, let's reconvene at 10 after 1.
We're good to reconvene.
Hey, are we ready? Make sure this is on, okay. Well, good afternoon. Rebecca Mandenhall, Administrative Services Director. Today, we're going to be talking about the programs in my department. My department can pretty much be described as the backbone of the city, or, in other words, the big overhead department. So we have four divisions. They're made up of administration and risk management, financial services, human resources, and information technology. In a few moments, you'll hear from each of my program managers. Jenny Liu will talk about administration and risk management. Angie Rodriguez will talk about human resources. And Will Hope will talk about information technology. They'll discuss their major services, achievements, and upcoming goals. And then I will cover the financial services to discuss more in detail the transition that's happening in that department. So although our department can be described as mostly overhead, the net impact to the general fund is approximately $2 million, as we do have cost recovery from revenue sources, such as allocations from other funds, business registration revenue, investment income, and fees related to services that we provide to other agencies. The majority of our expenses are related to salaries and benefits. And the professional services agreements are related to software maintenance agreements, audit fees, consulting services for property and sales tax, which I talked about earlier today, actuarial studies, training for the city, citywide, legal fees related to labor costs, and so on. So before I hand off the presentation to Jenny Liu, who will talk more about our risk management program, I wanted to add that our department also serves as liaison for all of the public safety contracts. I negotiate on behalf of the city for the sheriff's agreement, the county dispatch agreement, as well as the fire and emergency services agreement with Redwood City. So with that, I'll ask Jenny to come up.
Good afternoon, Jenny Liu, Senior Management Analyst. So the goal of administration is to provide leadership, oversight, and support in order to ensure that the city organization receive high-quality administrative services. Major services include strategic planning and special projects, project management, and implementation of the inform St. Carlos application. Other major services include serving on the Board of Directors for the Association of Bay Area Governments ABAK Plan. Risk management works with ABAK to obtain various insurance, such as general liability, auto, cybercrime liability, et cetera, in order to minimize and protect the city's resources against risk or liability. In addition, risk management also manages the workers' compensation program and chairs the city's safety committee, which comprises of employee representative, one from each department. In fiscal year 2015-16, administration managed various projects, including the implementation of the inform St. Carlos app, a five-year renewal of the police services agreement with the sheriff's office, the annual services schedule for fire and emergency services with Redwood City. And, as Rebecca mentioned, we're in the process of renewing the five-year agreement with the county for dispatch services. In addition, risk management completed environmental health and safety assessment and developed seven safety programs as required by state and federal regulations. Those include the fall protection plan, exposure control plan, SITAC Dusk, exposure control program, log out, tag out, block out program, personal protective equipment, hearing conservation, and confined space entry program. We also worked in conjunction with the city attorney's office in developing a contract guide and manual to assist employees in navigating the contract process and insurance limit requirements. The city is a part of the Association of Bay Area Governments Pool Liability Assurance Network. And every year, ABAK performs a best practices audit to help members reduce risk and liability. During the last audit, the city achieved one of the highest best practices score among 28 agencies. In fiscal year 2015-16, risk management also offered more than 30 safety and risk training classes. In addition, workers' compensation costs reduced about 33% between fiscal year 2013-14 and 2014-15, and another 33% between 2014-15 and 2015-16. In fiscal year 2014-15, risk received five employee safety incidents, out of which four became workers' compensation claim and results in 105 injury calendar days lost. For 2015-16, we see an increase of safety incidents reported. However, the workers' compensation claims should remain similar to 2014-15. And we anticipate that the total injury days lost will be similar. At this time, the percent of employees without any work-related injuries is fairly high, at 96%. And we hope to continue to see that by the end of 2015-16 fiscal year. The city received 22 general liability claims in fiscal year 2014-15. The number of claims received increased in 2015-16. We hope that there's no more than 26 liability claims received by the end of the fiscal year. The total amount of liability claims paid for fiscal year 2015 was $175,998. Although we see an increase of the severity of the claims received, the projected cost of claims will remain fairly constant for fiscal year 2015-16, as the dollar amount usually reflect the cost of claims received from previous year. So in the coming years, perhaps '17 or '18 or in the future, we anticipate an increase in the cost of claims. Lastly, we offer 36 risk management training sessions in 2015 and will continue to offer similar number of training sessions.
Can I ask just a quick question about the liability claims? So looking in the performance measures in the back here, it says, you know, we're going to pay out $170,000 this year, but then you're projecting $250,000 for next year and then the year after also. But you do say that you think the claims will go down? Or you said, actually, the number of claims, it looks like you're saying will stay constant, but the price, the cost per claim will go up. And what's the reason for that?
The severity of the claims, as I see the trend-
The general trend of the severity of the claims is going to-
Has increased.
And what's causing, we don't have to belabor the point, but what is, what do you think is the reason that they're getting more severe?
A lot of it is related to legal expenses. So when a claim gets rejected and the person comes back, we could incur a lot of legal expenses related to that.
Okay. I don't really, I'm not sure I really understand. So you mean that this is the amount that we pay out to the plaintiff who sues us? Is that right?
This also includes all of the legal expenses. So when we have a trip and fall, and, you know, we deny the claim or the council denies the claim,
Right.
they can come back and sue us. And so we have to hire attorneys to assist with that.
It's a reflection of the cost of legal services? Is that what it is?
It's both. Depends on the severity. So if we have a trip and fall, that's pretty severe.
I mean, I think it's good to budget higher. I just was wondering. Okay, thank you.
So for 2016-18, administration risk management does not need to make any additional changes to the existing base budget? So I apologize that due to some clerical oversight. This slide has some copy and paste errors. For the upcoming fiscal year 2016-18 goals, administration will continue to manage different projects and special projects. Risk management will develop and implement all required safety programs as recommended in our assessment. And we just have a few more left. We'll also develop, update, and implement a vehicle use policy. Risk management will again aim to achieve one of the highest best practice scores among our peers at ABAK and further improve risk management practices. We'll continue to offer more than 30 safety and risk training classes. Furthermore, we will continue to effectively manage claims administration process for general liability claims and workers' compensation claims. And given the past pattern that we see in workers' costs, we aim to further reduce workers' compensation costs as well. Any questions?
Sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Do we have any type of incentive programs? I know, like, with, you know, construction companies particularly, they advertise sometimes even on their job sites. You know, "We've gone this many days without any claims or accidents on this site." And then they also have, in that industry, they sometimes have incentive programs where if the money doesn't get spent on claims, then the department sees a benefit because that money gets to be spent instead on, you know, new safety equipment that the guys don't have to buy themselves and, you know, that kind of thing. Do we have any type of thing like that? Or have we ever looked into it?
Don't currently, but we can certainly look into it.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Yeah, just a couple. Going back to the whole litigation thing with, you know, claims that we deny. Am I to have the impression that more people are being more aggressive about their claims? In other words, that they're lawyering up more often now than they did? Is that part of it?
It's part of it. And sometimes, like I said, sometimes the severity of the claim, sometimes it gets really serious. Like somebody trip and fall. In the past, maybe somebody twisted their ankle. But we've seen that in current cases, somebody might have broken their neck. I mean, it would be, you know, a lot more serious.
Sure, sure. Okay. And then the other one, you listed that there's these risk management training sessions. Who goes to those? What are they, what is talked about during the training sessions?
We work with both ABAK and Cities Group. One is our JPA, one is our pool. And they provide a lot of trainings. So they may say insurance requirements in special events. So I would invite other departments to come or I would go as well. Along with that, we also have safety programs. So we could have something like PPE or protective equipment type of training that we would invite our maintenance staff to go to. So that's just some examples.
Looks like 32 sessions. You don't go to all of them, do you? I mean, that would, it's like three a month almost.
Because there's different specialty areas, so it would target different groups of people.
That's why you said "offer," not necessarily "attend it." Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so moving back to the financial services section. Just real quickly, I want to backtrack to the org chart. So as you can see, the finance division has six full-time positions. We've gone through quite the transition this year. We have three who have retired or in the process of retiring, and we have one additional vacancy. So, and with the three retiring employees, we're losing a combined total of services 65 years. So as you can imagine, these are some big holes to fill. And we've been working very closely with a lot of consulting firms and high-level accountants to backfill for these. And as Angie will talk about in a moment, we've been keeping her very, very busy with recruitments related to finance. So even though we're going through this big transition right now, we're still able to provide quality services. And these include financial planning and budgeting. So the binder you see before you, that's a product of the finance division. The financial planning and budgeting, I mean, the internal control and financial reporting. So we do the quarterly financial reports. We maintain strong internal controls. We're kind of the watchdog, if you will. We do the annual audit. We do all of the accounts payable and the payroll services. We manage the business registration program. We do all of the banking, cashiering, invoicing, revenue management. We do investment management. We prepare the investment policy and the quarterly investment reports. But in addition to providing all of these services for the city, the finance division also provides these services to two other separate agencies. And that would be South Bay Sideways Management Authority and the City County Association of Governments. So despite all the staffing transitions, we've been very successful over the past year. And we have the following noted accomplishments. We implemented new business registration software. As I mentioned earlier, this is giving us better reporting. And now businesses can apply online and pay online. And in addition, members of the public can search for businesses to make sure that they're current on their registration. We worked with Silicon Valley Clean Water to refinance their debt. We implemented GASB 68, which is the new pension reporting, which was included in the last comprehensive annual report, or the CAFR. We received the National Government Finance Officers Association Award for the CAFR. We're in the process of completing the biannual actuarial study for other post-employment benefits. So here's just a snapshot of some of the performance measures for this division. We have, I mean, more details is available in your packet. But you can see that the city has continued to receive national awards for both the CAFR and the biannual budget. Our activity volumes have been remaining pretty consistent for payments, receipts, and invoices. And as I mentioned before, with the implementation of the business registration, we're anticipating to have more renewals now that we can better track who's up for renewal. So for finance, there is no additional changes needed in the existing base budget. And our goals for the coming budget period are, obviously, our first and foremost important goal is to hire new staff and get everyone cross-trained for efficiencies and redundancies. We're going to continue to promote the online business registration system. And we're going to complete an update of the cash handling procedures and train all of the staff citywide. And as I mentioned at the council meeting Monday night, we'll be completing an updated comprehensive cost allocation study. This project will probably take about six months, maybe longer. And similar to this budget, it requires coordination with every single department. We're also going to be working with our auditors to implement GASB 75, which is the new accounting and financial reporting requirement for the other post-employment benefits. So if you have any questions?
Questions on finance? Bob?
So it says 4,900 vendor payments processes, like checks?
Yes, in wires. And that includes for the, if you're looking at the slide, that includes for the other agencies as well.
Okay, so we have 350 checks a month we're writing? Yeah, okay, which makes sense. Invoices sent, who are we sending invoices to? That's a lot.
We send invoices, well, we won't be sending invoices related to the alarm permits anymore. But we send invoices related to first alarm response. General invoices through the sheriff's office for separate fees. We do some, oh, the apartment inspection fees. And, oh, the fire inspection fees. Thank you, Tracy.
Because it just seems like, it seems like a lot. That's all. Two hundred and fifty sounds like a lot.
Right, and again, this is for all three agencies. So there's some in here for CCAG and some in here for SBWA.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions on finance? All right, HR?
Okay, I'll turn it over to Angie. What did I do? Hit the wrong button.
Good afternoon. Angie Rodriguez here to talk about the Division of Human Resources and about what we do. So some of the major services human resource covers is labor relations. So that not only includes negotiating collective bargaining agreements, but also advising supervisors and managers on contract interpretation and application. Recruitment, we do tons of recruitment. We partner with Department Citywide to ensure hiring needs are being met, coordinate with hiring managers and assist applicants in order to make the recruitment and selection process as seamless as possible. Training, we support the development and learning of employees for the life of their career with the city. Benefit Administration, we administer all of the city benefit programs, respond to employee questions on their benefits, and qualifying events that allow enrollment mid-year plan. Employee Relations, we support managers and employees to ensure respectful relationships exist within working groups and provide coaching and training. and provide coaching and training to resolve conflict and dealing with sensitive issues. So just some of the major accomplishments we've implemented in the year 1516. We implemented a new online training calendar that exists on our intranet. And it provides all employees access to all of the number of training opportunities that are provided to the employees through the city and our consortiums. It allows the employees and supervisors to easily access the tons of training opportunities that we provide. We successfully complied with the new Affordable Care Act reporting requirements, which now require annual reporting on employees' medical plan enrollment and its affordability. We successfully negotiated, implemented new MOU and salary benefit resolutions. And so these are year-to-date, really. We hired nine full-time employees and 11 part-time employees. We do anticipate that number going up prior to the end of this fiscal year. And then below that is just some of the positions that were filled during that recruitment time. And then these are just some of the performance measures that we've looked at. I will just focus on fiscal year 15 and what's projected in 16. So we supported, the two of us in Human Resources supported in year 15, fiscal year 15, supported 106 employees. That slightly has gone up for 16 with the additions of a few positions. We have processed 18 recruitments in fiscal year 2015. And it would, we project that will end this current fiscal year at around 23. You can see that we've, we go through a lot of applications. For each recruitment that we receive, that we put out, we get approximately 40, generally more, for each position that we recruit for. The number of new hires for fiscal 15 was 32. We project that to be slightly higher by this coming, the end of this year, at 35. The numbers right below that for fiscal 16 actually don't add up to what we project the new hires to be because those are actual numbers and not projected numbers. The trainings that we offered in 2015 were 127. It was slightly down this year to 108. But we will be bumping that back up coming next fiscal year. And again, it's the two of us in Human Resources. So the total number that we support is around 50. We have no additional changes to the existing base budget for this upcoming budget. And goals. So upcoming goals, we will be updating our anti-harassment training to comply with AB 2053. AB 2053 is the newly implemented requirement. It's also known as anti-bullying law. It's part of our anti-harassment training now. It was implemented, or the new law became effect January 2015, but it was not a requirement to implement immediately. We will also be implementing a new online performance evaluation system. This will allow our supervisors and managers to evaluate employees more easily and efficiently. We will be doing a cost study analysis on some of our supplemental plans to ensure that they are most cost-effective. The current plans that we will be looking at is our employee assistance program plan, our flexible spending plans, and our commuter benefit plans. We'll be hoping to conduct a citywide review of all of our classifications and compensation structure. And we will be supporting all the upcoming negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on HR? Matt?
So one of the questions I have is, how to put this? How much are we looked at as employees? Because, and the reason I ask is because the other day I was having a conversation with Crystal about training that's required of us. And, you know, sometimes it's a little difficult to find the training that, you know, we're required to do. For instance, we have ethics training that's required before December. And that seems to fall on her desk. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to manage the city necessarily, but it's just curious to me because I hear you talking about training. And, you know, sometimes we require training as well. The other, I'll throw out my other question is, for years, I have criticized our process that we do at the city manager and the city attorney regarding our evaluation. Because to me, it seems archaic. Some of the questions don't seem like they really apply. And I've always wanted that to be looked at. And we've talked about it years ago as a council. And we made a few changes. We had a little subcommittee at one time. Do you guys ever get involved in that and looking at what we do relative to the evaluation of the, you know, those evaluations? Because it seems, to me, it seems like something that's caught in the past and really needs to be brought up to more modern times.
So I can answer some, and maybe I'll let Rebecca answer as well. But it's in far as to the first question about training. Typically, your training is handled through the city clerk's office. But it's not something that we shouldn't look at. I mean, we definitely should look at that. And if it's more appropriate that it comes into the fold of HR, I'd be happy to look at that. In regards to the evaluation process, I think that too is something we can look at. If it's, the purpose of an evaluation is to provide the best feedback you can to an employee. And if the current process isn't working, isn't meeting your needs, isn't meeting the employee's needs, it does need to be reevaluated.
If I can just add something there. We are looking at the evaluation process for all the city employees right now. And I believe it was up there as one of the goals for next year is to implement an online evaluation process through ADP. The one we have is very time-consuming, burdensome. And by having an online option, we may be able to, you know, get better compliance.
Well, if I may, the other thing with that, I, you know, I know in the business world, one of the things that goes on is evaluations that are more fluid. And I have trouble with that because, you know, we're expected to evaluate Jeff and Greg, you know, once a year. And sometimes, you know, never mind, they provide us with what they've done and everything. It's like, gosh, I can't remember half the stuff, you know? Or sometimes something will happen. I mean, these guys are good, but still, sometimes, you know, things happen. And I might talk to them about it. But by the time the evaluation time comes where it's official, I've totally forgot unless I make notes or something. And that's why I think some companies have instituted something that's more fluid and timely, if you will, you know? So I don't know. And maybe the online thing would be, could be a helpful use in that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I can help you afterwards.
Gosh, Will got dressed up and got a haircut and everything.
Good afternoon. Will Hoke, Information Technology. Some of our major services is network infrastructure. IT provides support for network hardware and along with the cabling as well. Our help desk supports about 300 support tickets a year. We also provide phone support. Mostly, it's the voice-over-IP phone system. But we also do have a few analog lines that we do support. Besides providing support for the software, we also assist departments in integrating their applications with other enterprise applications. We provide mobile support for about 75 smartphones and tablets. We also provide support for over 200 PCs, laptops, servers, and printers. We also have a technology replacement plan. The IT division is responsible for replacing a certain percentage of IT-related technology on an annual basis. And that is based on a schedule that we have set up. We also support the e-notify system. We stream the TV channel on the website. We also are responsible for broadcasting the council meetings and also the planning commission meeting. I gotta change that, don't I? We also provide online services and resources, which is the website, business registration, e-packets, just to name a few. We also provide television programming, which is the slides that you see on Channel 27 or on U-verse Channel 99. We also rebroadcast council and planning commission meetings. And we also provide PSA service announcements on that TV channel as well. We also provide internet services.
PSA?
Public service announcements. We also provide internet services, which is the websites as well. We provide mobile services. We support roughly about 88 city-owned mobile devices. We provide support for about 62 phones and voicemail boxes for the sheriff's office who are located in City Hall. We are in the process of completing our network hardware upgrade project. So far, we have replaced 16 switches at six different locations. We have upgraded and virtualized our servers such as e-pockets, SC permits, the source, and the file server, just to name a few. We also upgraded to financial applications, MUNIS, and team budget. We also assisted in the implementation of the new business registration software. Through the technology replacement program, we've replaced 30 PCs, seven laptops, and 40 mobile devices since July 1st. During the ACC remodel, we installed free Wi-Fi for all the customers at the ACC. And not only in finance, they've had turnover. We've also had a big changes in IT. We've hired myself as the IT manager. We brought in two systems analysts and a senior systems analyst since February, early February. All right, key performance measures. In 2015, City's website has 687,355 visitors. We expect that to be somewhere around 720,000 this year. Our uptime of servers is 99.99%, which means we expect about 52 minutes of unscheduled downtime per year. In 2015, we've received 3,208 support tickets. I expect this to be about 3,500 this year. And it's probably going to be roughly about that on the ongoing years. Our first time to respond to a support request is about .8 hours, which is roughly 48 minutes. We expect that to be close to about 30 minutes to respond to the first ticket. It's taken us about, last year was 18 hours to resolve a support ticket. This year, we're expecting it to be around 16 hours. Customer user satisfaction fiscal year 2015 was 99.5%. We're hoping to be about 99.9%, but I think that's going to be closer to that 99.5 this year. We support about 186 to 190 computers and servers. And for the fiscal year 1618, we are asking for no additional changes to the existing base budget. So the goals for fiscal year 1618 is to train the new staff. We need to train them on the new network hardware. We also need to train them several different applications that we are supporting throughout the city. This will allow us to provide better service to our users and customers. We're also planning to replace our hybrid V servers this summer. It's about four servers. And that's hosting about 23 virtual servers at this moment. So we're planning on migrating more servers to the virtual environment. So we need to replace that hardware. We're also looking into replacing our current phone system, which is approximately 10 years old. Most of the hardware has reached its useful end of life. So we have to replace about, I believe there's 130 phones, including also five routers. And we also have to replace the hardware that runs the air phone system. And we're also looking to move our Microsoft applications to the cloud. This will eliminate several servers such as the exchange server and potentially our file servers. And there's a typo here. It's identity services, not identify services. We're looking to implement identity services and enhance network security. We're looking to ways to protect the internal network from unauthorized access as more and more mobile devices are accessing our network. We need to identify the users and then provide them with the appropriate level that they need. We also need to enhance our GIS application. Demand from the Departments for GIS Services has grown over the past couple of years. We need to upgrade the application and also identify and update new layers. Also, we need to continue to replace older computers, servers, printers, and IT-related equipment according to the technology replacement plan. Every time we buy a new piece of hardware, we put on the technology replacement plan depending on the type of the hardware. We assign so many years, and then we replace it accordingly. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Questions for Will? Ron?
Yeah, thanks, Cameron. Will, you mentioned something about, you said website visitors. Did you mean website visits? I mean, we don't have 687,000 people visiting our website.
I'm sorry, it's visits.
Okay, that was it. I had a couple others, but I'll, go ahead.
All right, Matt?
Do we, so do we operate this with a sinking fund of some kind?
We have the technology replacement funds. So, you know, so every time, like, all of this equipment that's behind you has been added to the technology replacement. And then we have money that goes in every year on a schedule so that we can fund this when these are up for. Just like all of the PCs that he mentioned, 30 that you, yeah, 30 this year.
My other question is, one thing I'm not, so far haven't seen anywhere. Maybe it'll come up when the sheriff's office comes up. But again, thinking back to this OES meeting I went to, and it's really got me thinking, I guess. If you have a hazard of earthquake or, you know, other kinds of things that could affect everything you do, and what do we have for backup? What do we have for communication devices that aren't so high-tech? Because some of this stuff won't work. Have we, are we, where are we on that kind of thing?
We do, we do back up all our servers every night. And then they stay locally, and then we send them offsite throughout the day. So if there is a disaster and we lose our data center, we can bring back that data. And we can actually potentially spin up the data at the data centers.
What about communication devices to?
Our phone system is, has some built-in redundancy. So for example, the sites have routers. So if their connection back to City Hall is lost, the routers will take over the phone calls and turn into just a basic telephone.
But we don't do any kind of low-tech as well in case of?
The sheriff's office and fire can probably talk more about some of the emergency backups for their communication as opposed to City Hall itself. The, you know, fire and police and public works have, do have and have arrangements for separate communication systems in an emergency.
And we also have multiple servers running in the phone system. It's just not one server. There's two servers. And there's two servers for the phone, voicemail, and for an E91 system.
Couple of questions. So you talk about the number of support tickets or support requests. Those are all internal from employees, is that right?
Almost all of them we do occasionally get. For example, the public wants to be removed from, like, say, e-notify. So we do get a couple, not too many. We primarily support internal customers.
Okay. And so you're projecting no growth in the number of tickets over the next two years? At least in the performance measure here, it says 3,500 a year?
Yeah, I think we're going to probably stay roughly there.
And why don't you think it's going to grow?
Because the employees that we're hiring now are more tech savvy. So that cuts down a little bit.
They'll fix it.
No, no, they won't fix it. We get a lot of questions asking, you know, how do I do this? How do I do that?
Yeah.
So the newer employees that we're bringing on usually already have the answers to those questions.
Okay. And then when you talk about, oh, go ahead.
If I may, some of the training classes that Angie has found are also very helpful for reducing support tickets because we have classes for everybody now. And if they're taking advantage, they can help themselves, so.
Got it. When I look at, you know, the goals and I see things like, you know, replace the phone phone system, those aren't in the administrative services budget, right? Those are capital, is that the way to think about it? Because a lot of your goals here are, you know, sort of technology upgrades or tech, so.
So the telephone system would come out of our equipment replacement fund this next year. The GIS upgrade and the network monitoring are part of the CIP that we'll talk about more next week.
Okay. So in terms of, I guess, maybe one more question for Rebecca. Like, you didn't break out IT as a sort of a separate budget line item, but can you give me a ballpark of the relative cost of IT of the whole administrative services budget? Because it is, it's sort of a unique entity, unless I missed it, but I?
So it's about 1.5%.
Okay.
For operations, that doesn't include the equipment replacement because that need can go up or down depending on the amount of equipment we need to replace and how far behind we are in replacing certain items.
And that's mostly salary and benefits, or is there marginal costs from running the equipment or other things that we're spending on? I just don't really have a sense of, I understand when we buy a piece of equipment, that, you know, that comes out of capital, but is there ongoing cost for running and maintaining the systems that we have? Our license fees or other things like that?
Yeah, all of our license fees go through the IT budget. So it's salaries and benefits, it's professional services, which include all of the software maintenance contracts, then there's a number. We have all of the telephone systems and all of the, all the mobile phone bills go through here. Different support, and we have so many different software applications, and so all of the maintenance and licensing, like, all the Microsoft licensing goes through this budget.
Okay. You know, I've said this in the past, I'll just say it one more time, which is that, you know, at my company, we use Google Apps, we use Gmail. We do so very effectively, and I've seen, noted that other public agencies have moved to that, to Google, including recently the Sequoia Union High School District, and I believe it's substantially less than what they've been previously paying for Office. I know you're a big fan of Microsoft Excel, and I support your ability to use Microsoft Excel. I just think that for the routine Office applications and email applications, I would just, I'm not saying you have to do it, I just say it'd be worth doing cost comparison and seeing where it stands out, but I've found it to be very effective and also very effective for document sharing among, and collaboration among the organizations, so.
Yeah, one of, in our professional services line item is also dues that we pay to Gartner, and Gartner's a well-known IT support and consulting service, and those would be the people that we would go to to ask these kinds of questions. That was a relatively new agreement that we just went into last year, and now that Will has been able to hire some support staff, he can focus time on doing some of the research.
Okay. Ron, did you have some other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple others. Will, I want to come back to this, you mentioned here about Microsoft Cloud, moving things to the cloud. What does that mean in terms of, well, for instance, security? How secure is that?
Like, it's like with anything you put in the cloud, there is a security risk, but there are applications and services that you can put in place to help secure it. There's thousands and thousands of companies and cities who are using the Microsoft Office 365 or the Google Docs, so security is definitely a concern.
You know, I have, I've actually known very little about the cloud, I just know it's out there. So, I mean, what does it mean to go to the cloud in terms of, like, hardware? Does it save hardware? Do you actually go and eliminate a piece of hardware? When you do that, is it a form of a backup? Is there, is there money saved as well? Is it a cost savings?
Yeah, there would definitely be hardware cost savings. We wouldn't have to buy a new server every couple or every four or five years. We'd also save, we wouldn't have to worry about backing up the data. We wouldn't have to worry about the server being online all the time because that's something that the cloud provider would provide.
So you could actually shut things down?
Yeah, because it'd be hosted by somebody else in the cloud.
Does that mean you could actually shut down a machine and save energy?
Yeah, because we wouldn't have a server here. So we, for example, Exchange, we put Exchange in the cloud, and we'd eliminate that server, eliminate all the licensing costs that are on that server.
Okay. Thanks.
Just real quickly, the one thing about putting things in the cloud is you have to have a reliable internet provider because you have to be able to access the cloud. So that's another thing that is a consideration.
Okay, I apologize, I did have one more question.
Go for it.
What is Hyper-V?
It's the technology we use in the virtualizer servers.
On the virtual what?
Virtual server.
On the virtual server.
Yeah, yeah.
Stop there.
I'll tell you about it later.
Old guy says stop.
Something I was talking to Crystal about before lunch is, for a couple of days, you guys had my iPad because it wasn't linking up, and so I was forced to access my email on my computer in my office, and it made me realize how clunky, was it called Outlook?
Yes, it's Outlook.
So I was asking Crystal, you know, who would be in charge of if we were to change that or update it or something, and she said that would be you guys. So, and I don't see anything in the budget for it. It is, I can just tell you as someone who uses it when I can't use my iPad, which, on the iPad, the email is set up totally differently, and it's much more user-friendly. But when you're on Outlook, I was telling her, I was trying to delete emails, and on my iPad, I can go through and hit Edit, and then, you know, click on them, and it puts an X next to it or a check, and then you just hit Trash, and they all go away. I was trying to do that on Outlook, and I would get, like, I would click 1, 2, 3, and then I'd get to the fourth one, and they all go back to not being checked, you know? Stuff like that, it's just, the whole thing is really clunky, trying to reply to somebody, trying to do much of anything, so.
So this has been a significant pain point for me as well. We, I did work with Will to get it so that email is forwarded to my Gmail account, and I can apply, reply that way, which goes to my phone. So there are some workarounds, but what he's talking about in terms of moving to Microsoft 365, or is it 365?
Office 365.
Office 365, and moving to the cloud would have a substantial improvement on that stuff.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because what you're doing now is you're accessing a web interface which pings our server, and it's really old and outdated and doesn't work well, so it would be significantly better.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to change from Outlook then?
You wouldn't, no, but, I mean, you can speak to it.
Okay.
You don't have to.
Okay. Any further questions? Any direction anyone wants to give on any or any discussion about any of the presentations that we've had under administrative services? I mean, I don't have a lot of modifications to the staff recommendation. I'll just say that, you know, I want to make sure that we're staying, you know, to Matt's points earlier, is just staying as far, I wouldn't say the government is ever going to get ahead of the curve in technology, but at least staying current and looking for opportunities so that we're not, you know, working off of legacy applications, hosting stuff ourselves, that we're looking for, you know, kind of newer cloud-based solutions and other things, so. If there's a case to be made in the future for further investment that's going to save us money down in the long run, I'm all for it, so.
Thank you.
I just had one comment, talking about saving money, is in the area of encouraging, of healthcare and healthcare costs, workman's comp costs and so forth, tied into the use of having employees do, make healthy choices. I know, again, some companies have, you know, very robust programs that help employees choose, you know, healthy lifestyles, working out and so forth. We have a gym over here. I go in there, and the only employees I ever see are Jay and police officers or people from the sheriff's department. And it seems to me that, especially if there's a way to not only have more healthy employees, but also have, get some cost savings from some kind of program like that. I don't know if we're considering that or?
We have had some health and wellness brown bag sessions where, you know, we host them over the lunch period. Jenny and Angie have been, have been great in looking for these opportunities to bring forward to the employees. We do have the gym, like you mentioned, and I know a number of our employees have been taking advantage of the programs at the youth center. And during lunch, they walk over and they play pickleball, or they do pop-up badminton, or, so we have, we have a lot of employees who are engaged in health and wellness now.
That's good to know, okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much, Rebecca.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Okay. We'll move on to police. Are there any police officers present?
Rest of the market, Burlingame.
That's right. You got, give us 30 seconds of how it's going over there?
It's not going very well.
Oh, this is the?
I'm in, I'm in the dark.
The event.
It's the Burlingame event, yeah, we've sent people there.
Trump is in town for an event in Burlingame, in protest and things.
Yeah, so it's keeping us really busy, and we've sent people from San Carlos, so, because they just needed extra people. So, yeah, it's a busy day there. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of City Council, Greg Roth is Police Chief, and I have the clicker right here, right? So, yeah, first of all, I just, I want to thank the council. You know, the council signed the contract with the sheriff's office a little over five years ago, and then just recently renewed it. Man, so I just want to thank you for your continued trust and confidence in the sheriff's office. I know when we entered this contract, it was a very difficult decision for the council to make, and they made it. And the desire in that contract was really financially to get some significant savings in public safety and also to increase services, and I think that's really what's happened over the past five years. And again, I just want to thank you for the confidence you've placed in us. Above, in this slide is the org chart for the sheriff's office for the San Carlos Police Bureau, and it really looks the same as it did, almost the same as it did when we first came over. The council has added a second motor deputy and added some investigative, more investigative support, and has also added a fourth CSO to cover for the parking permit program on the east side. So other than that, it looks pretty much the same. In terms of our budgets, we, you know, in the police budget, it's not only sheriff's contract, but we have a lot of things rolled up in there. For example, the amount we pay to the OES, JPA, Narcotics Task Force funds and those sorts of things, and Police Communications is all wrapped up in there. We're currently, we just have a contract from the sheriff's coming to the city, and I think we're looking at a 1.8% increase as all. And in terms of the base contract, that's what we've been averaging, really under 2% a year on terms of increases. And I know that was a concern of some people, that the sheriff's office would somehow start jacking up the, you know, the cost of the contract, and that's just not happening. And I know the city is currently talking to Public Safety Communications about the next five-year contract, and I'll just let that play out as it plays out, but it looks good there as well in terms of the finances. So that's kind of where we are budget-wise. Really, the major services that we provide are some of the, kind of the big-ticket items, are the dedicated traffic deputies. We came in with one, the city council asked, wanted another one, and then recently, just in the last council meeting, wanted to continue that second traffic deputy, which really speaks well for your commitment to traffic safety in this community, because having two traffic deputies, dedicated traffic deputies for a city of this size is as good or better than anybody else has. So it certainly shows well for your commitment to traffic safety. School resource officers, when we had the police department, we had pretty much gotten rid of that at that time, but now we have a really strong involvement in the school. Our school resource officers mostly is Deputy Wally Rosales, and Wally's just been fantastic. And I think if you talk to a lot of the principals and all, you'll hear good things about him. We still have the Sheriff's Activity League and our Community Policing Unit, which really engages the community in a wide variety of levels. I did some math on that, and that is about, almost, we spent almost about one full-time equivalent engaged in the schools and our community policing efforts, and that is not in part of the contract, that just comes along with the sheriff's office. You won't see that in the budget anywhere, so it's a really, it's a big, you know, it's a big, kind of a freebie in a sense for the city to have almost one full-time equivalent police officer dedicated to the schools and to community policing and the Sheriff's Activities League. We have a Sheriff's Volunteers and Policing Program. You've seen them, they've helped us out on patrol, they've helped us out in a lot of the special events. And then obviously, the sheriff's office, we are the largest law enforcement agency in the county. We have over 700 employees and a budget approaching $200 million, and we have pretty much all kinds of resources, and all of those are available at the city's disposal. Some of the big-ticket items we did this year was the town hall meeting as it related to the burglaries situation, and we had that in January. You know, fortunately, things have, I would say, normalized now. As it relates to burglaries, we're probably at normal, maybe a little bit below, but, you know, that could change again any moment. So, you know, we're very vigilant. We've implemented a lot of measures to help prevent those, including an additional $100,000 that the council gave to the sheriff's office for additional overtime, and we've been employing that. And so we also tried a Twitter Town Hall this year. It was worth the effort, but it wasn't a big show-up, so I just want to say that, you know, but it was nice to try. You know, we send out SMC alert cards, so this is the mechanism that I use to communicate with the community, and we are up to almost 10,000 people signed up for SMC, San Carlos SMC alerts. I'm sorry, they're not people, they're systems. So if you sign up for it and you sign up your cell phone and your computer, that's two. So we have about almost 10,000 devices signed up for the San Carlos SMC alert, and I think there's only two cities more than us, and that's San Mateo and Redwood City. Other than that, we're top in the county, so that really helps us when we need to communicate with the city, with our residents. Obviously, our participation is pretty obvious in all the special events that the city has. You see us out there, and we really enjoy it. We enjoy that interface, we enjoy the interface. No offense to anybody in this room, but with the kids particularly, so. When the sheriff's office took over, we had two Neighborhood Watch groups in this community, two dedicated Neighborhood Watch. We are now up to 26. And do we have a map that we can show? I have a hard copy map, but Crystal was kind of kind enough to rig us up with something that we can put up on the PowerPoint here. And these are just some colored slides showing where our Neighborhood Watch groups are. And to go from two to 26 is really outstanding. I think, you know, we've always advertised that we're available and that we're here to support Neighborhood Watch. Again, I go back to Deputy Wally Rosales, who's been leading this effort and very, very responsive. Anytime a community says, hey, we'd like to do it, you know, Wally's right there. And so I'm going to talk again about Neighborhood Watch in a little bit, so. Thanks, Crystal. Some of our key performance measures, we are consistently sending out community satisfaction surveys. We're at about 95%, which is really pretty good. We're happy with that result. I get a lot of nice comments about the way the deputies, how the deputies performed, the care that they've shown, the professionalism that they show on these calls. We've been doing it since we started here in San Carlos, the sheriff's office, and we continue to get, you know, a lot of appreciative results and comments. We had a 20% reduction in accidents this year. That's one of the measures we looked at, and that's good. I put 5% next year because it's going to be pretty hard to beat that. You know, this is a busy community, and there is a lot of traffic going through this community. We have two dedicated traffic officers, and, you know, they do the best they can, as are the patrol deputies, but, you know, I was actually surprised and pleased to see that number, but we'll see what next year holds before I start bragging about it. Abandoned vehicles are pretty much easy for us to abate. When people call us in, we get to all of them. And sometimes people, abandoned vehicles, you know, we mark them, and then people have 72 hours to move them or something, so, you know, they play the game with us and they move them around, but we do the best we can with getting them out of there. I'll talk a little bit more about emergency response times in a minute, but our emergency response times are good, and we responded to about 81% of our calls for service, emergency service, in less than five minutes. In terms of our crime clearance rates, we really look hard at the violent crime rates because those were the ones where people are most impacted, and we're clearing about 72% of those, and we hope to continue along that line. In terms of the budget recommendations for this year, there is a recommendation for an additional $100,000 of police funding, and that allows me quite a bit of flexibility to respond to whatever is, whatever's going on in the community. If we have traffic situations and accidents, you know, it might be a good source of funds to increase traffic enforcement in an area through overtime or special enforcement. If we have the burglary detail again, then it allows me to use those funds to deal with that. If we find ourselves short in an area as it relates to emergency preparedness, which Councilmember Grokot was talking to you about earlier, it allows me to use funds to shore up emergency preparedness. So it just allows some flexibility to respond to the kind of the current issues. An ongoing assessment of patrol workload, I'll get into that in a little bit. We are growing as a city over these next two or three years, and it's going to be really important for us to figure out where we are now in terms of police workload, and where is this new development going to be, and what, if anything, do we need to do? does this new development going to be, and what, if anything, do we need to do as a community to respond to that as it relates to police resources? So I'll talk about that in a little bit. And again, the impact of development on police. So in terms of our goals for this year, number one is crime prevention education. You know, one of the things that we've experienced is an increase in property crimes in this county, that's happening, and we've seen it here in this city. You remember the burglary situation? We could double our police force and still not be able to stop all these crimes. So the question is, where is the point of leverage on it? Where can we get leverage on this? And I think it really is with, maybe with the residents, maybe with you and I as private citizens, because I'm a resident of San Carlos too. And so maybe that's where the point of leverage is, in an area of personal responsibility and accountability for our own protection. You know, I promise you, if you decided that nobody was ever going to rip you off, and nobody's ever going to take anything out of your car, you can make that happen. You just don't put anything in there and don't leave it in there. People might break your window, but they won't rip you off. And when we make these decisions, and we, as individuals, there's an enormous amount that we can do to decrease crime, probably more than we could if we were to double the size of our police force. So I want to look at doing that and leveraging that. The Fire Department and the Police Bureau, we're going to be doing a Public Safety Fair this year. I think that's in October, if I'm not mistaken, or September? And, you know, we're looking forward to that. That, from the police perspective, and I'll let Chief Moplin talk from the fire perspective, this is an opportunity for us to educate people on crime prevention, on some of the things that are available to them. Third thing was, we want to leverage Neighborhood Watch. We have gone up from 26, you know, from two Neighborhood Watch Groups to 26 Neighborhood Watch Groups. These are organized people who care about public safety in this community, and so there's a lot we can do. Chief Moplin and I, we're talking earlier today about National Night Out, which comes in August. And normally what we do, because there's been so few Neighborhood Watch Groups, we kind of go hopscotch from place to place with our trucks and cars and motorcycles and stuff. There's too many to do that now, so we thought about a central, maybe a central location where we can all come together. So we're discussing the possibility of Burton Park for that night, and we can make it a night where we can bring all the Neighborhood Watch Groups out and, you know, make it really their event and keep us in the public eye and keep their safety in, as a priority. Another one is a new computer aided dispatch system. Whether you're working in construction, or accounting, or high-tech, or insurance, everybody has a backbone M I S system that is their bread and butter, and so does police, and it is our, it is computer aided dispatch. Ours is old. We're going to be getting a new one. And I'm working on, leading the Law Enforcement Committee in the county for a new computer aided dispatch system, and I'm really excited about the products. Things have changed a lot in 20 years, as you know, no matter what field you're in. And this new system is going to allow us to do and deploy resources in a way that is extremely effective. I'm impressed with its ability to protect deputies and officers in the field, to get them the information they need, and obviously to keep the community safe, so we're excited about that. And then, and then the last thing really, this year, is looking at assessing patrol staffing levels. One of the things that Mayor Johnson said when opening up the meeting is that this process allows us to do some things that maybe we haven't been able to do in normal budget processes, which is talk at some length and dive down on some issues that we really haven't done before. And so one of those, it has to do with patrol staffing. And why, this is, why is this a good time? It is a good time because of the development that we see on the horizon in this community. This will be, from a policing perspective and from every perspective, this will be a little bit of a different place in three years from now, and I'll talk a little bit about what the change is coming, and you know some of it, but I have some numbers on that change. And what is that going to do to police? If you think, you're talking about hotels, we're talking about residences, new businesses, increased vibrancy, increased visitors, increased traffic, you know, what is that going to do to us? So, you know, the first thing to do is, before we even get there, is figure out, where are we right now? And I've never really had this discussion with council, haven't really needed to, because we felt pretty good, we didn't have major development on the horizon, and as some of you remember, we were talking more about how we were going to cut the Police Department than build it up. So really hasn't been, you know, a topic of conversation, but now is a good time to talk about it and to lay out, number one for the council, how do you decide when is it's time to increase law, police services on the street? You know, is it just the police chief telling you, "I think we should add?" I hope not, I'm sure you guys hope that's not true. What are the metrics by which you will determine and make these kinds of decisions? And so I want to spend a little bit of time going over that and see where we are right now, and talk about some of the obvious ones. It's not really a subjective decision. It really is an objective decision. There's data out there to help you guide this council in terms of what and when to do something. And some of this will make intuitive sense to you. Number one is crime rates. What are the crime rates doing before you decide you're going to increase or decrease police services? What are the emergency response times to calls? How are those trending, and what are they looking like? Patrol workload, what are the, how busy are the deputies in terms of call volume? Because there's a direct relationship between how busy they are and then how much time they have for proactive policing, including traffic enforcement. So that's important to look at. Another issue is community expectations. Each community is different in what they want and expect from police. I can tell you, this community expects a lot from police, and, but I'm grateful because when they get it, they're very appreciative. But they do, we do have a high expectation here, and we've been able to meet that. And then obviously, lastly, the big issue is future development, what's coming down the pike. So we'll take a look at each of these one by one, we'll see where we are right now, and then I'll talk about, a little bit about the future. In terms of crime rates, how do we see it as crime rates in this community? Relatively flat, maybe overall trending down? We don't see anything there pointing to, "Oh my gosh, we need to do something." A crime rate situation as it relates to staffing at the current, where we are currently, is pretty good. In terms of our emergency response times, how long does it take us to get to an emergency call? Right now, we're averaging somewhere around four minutes, maybe a little over four minutes. That's a very respectable response time. It's hard for a police department to get to response times that are in the three-minute range on a consistent basis. Granted, we make some in excess of four minutes, but sometimes we're there in seconds. It just depends where we are at any one time. So really, nothing in the response times pointing right now that we're in trouble and we need to do something. In terms of response time and minutes, we have, you know, about 81% of our calls are responding to in less than five minutes. And again, that's a respectable rate. Now let's take a look at patrol workload. This is the amount of work that a deputy has available, and I'll explain this to you, and this is kind of the important part of the equation. When you take a deputy's day, let's say we were on 12-hour shifts, right off the bat, one-third of a deputy's day is spent in what we consider administrations, writing reports, taking, having lunch, going to court, all the administrative things, getting ready for shift, getting their cars ready, gassing their cars. These are things that we've, you know, kind of studied through the years, and you figure, we figured that it's about a third of the day deputies writing reports and doing those kinds of things. So a third of their day is already gone. So the next set to look at is, how much time are they spending on calls for services? We take a look at that over, in this case, we looked at 13 weeks, and took 13 weeks' worth of data to figure out how much time they're spending. And I can tell you, what you really want to have is, you really would like to see those numbers, the percent that they're spending on call volume, to be at or less around 33% for a community like San Carlos. If we start to exceed 33%, we're beginning, we're going to begin to feel community pressure on slow response times, stacking calls, and things of that nature. So, you know, that's a loose figure, there's no hard science to that number, but that's, that's where you're going to start to see some pressure.
Sorry, yeah. Can you break up, can you break down this chart for us?
I'm going to, right now.
Okay, sorry. So, okay, go ahead.
So this is, this is the average work week of a day shift, of a night shift patrol deputy.
And what's the, what's the Y-axis?
The, is the, the Y-axis, the percentage, is the percentage of a day. So the gray is 30, see the gray? Those are all 33% because 33% of their day is already gone. The orange is the amount of call volume, is the percentage of their time they're spending answering calls for service.
And what's the remainder that's not?
That's their available patrol time. That's the time that they get to go out and go by your house, make sure everything's okay, make traffic stops.
The 22, 22, 23, 24, that's the percentage of time that they're actively responding to a call that, for service?
That came from communications.
Okay, and so the white that's not there means they're just out in the community waiting for calls to come in or making stops?
So about 45, in this case, in this case, it'd be 33, and 22 is 55. 45% they're, they're out there. Okay, thank you.
And that's where we are with night shift on average, and that's pretty good. I mean, we're sitting, right now as we sit, we're pretty good on night shift. And so here's where we are in day shift. So on day shift, we're still okay, we're still under 33, but day shift is busier on call volumes. We're taking more, we're taking more calls for service on day shift. We have more of the stores open, we have, you know, more of the crime occurring on day shift, more of the reports being taken on day shift, and that sort of thing. So you can see that, you know, a normal, maybe on average, a normal night shift deputy's got spending about 23, 24% of their time on calls, and on day shift, you have a normal deputy spending somewhere between around 30, 32% of their time on calls for service. And as I said earlier, you really want to be somewhere around, you know, when you start crossing 33%, if you start spending, you know, if your deputies are spending 40 to 45% of their time on call, they're stacking calls, they're waiting, people are waiting, and it can be very frustrating at times. So you look at day shift and night shift, to where we are right now, you know, you look at the crime rate, you look at the response times, you look at the patrol workload and community satisfaction surveys, and for right now, we're sitting pretty good. I don't see any need to do anything at this point based upon that data. But here's where we look in the future. If you look at the planned development and the development that may be in the pipeline, we're looking at a potential of 205 residential units, 480 or more hotel rooms, almost 700,000 square feet of commercial space, and a parking structure in excess of a half a million square feet. And the vibrancy and the traffic and the potential crime and other issues that that brings to the community, as we move forward into the development pipeline, it is, this is a time for me to talk about that, that police and public safety in general has to be woven into this conversation, because particularly on day shift, we're right up against where I think we should be moving forward. So, and I just wanted to, you know, again, have this conversation and talk about how councils and how people make decisions on workload for police. This was a good opportunity with this workshop to do that. And obviously, we're in a good spot. We don't do anything, need to do anything today, but as we look, we may have to in the future, and this gives the council ample time to begin to consider that and to begin to weave that into your decision-making. And that's all the questions I have. I'm ready, I mean, of my presentation, I'm ready to take questions.
All right, thank you, Chief. Let's start with Matt.
So, a couple things. One, appreciate the report, first off, but I would really like to see, you've got this percent of emergency calls responded to in under five minutes. I'd really like to see what that data would look like if you switched that number to something like three minutes or four minutes. If you moved the bar, where would we be?
That can be done, that kind of information can be done in any minute increment. I think you'll see that there's going to be a percentage of calls that we get to in less than a minute, and a percentage in less than two minutes, so.
Okay. I would like to see on your goals, rather than leverage Neighborhood Watch, you were able to, and I applaud you for what you've done here regarding Neighborhood Watch Groups, that we've got this many, but I'd really like to see a number applied to that so that we go from 26 to 36 or something, you know, some goal that's out there that you can really shoot for. You have Neighborhood Watch, I think something we could use in this community, personally, I don't, I don't like all the traffic calming devices that we're putting in, they are a total irritant to, you know, to someone who drives cautiously. When you have to, you know, go around something and, you know, like the things we're trying out there on St. Francis, it's almost an insult to someone who drives carefully to have to, you know, deal with those kinds of things. And so one of the things I think we could look at doing is traffic watch, where vehicles get reported, and then if the Sheriff's Department starts to see that, gee, we're getting a blue Acura in the morning, you know, complaints on this kind of vehicle, you target that vehicle, you go after them. And then lastly, all the things you've said about, you know, where we are on service and so forth, I would really like to know, what would it cost us right now to go with another deputy? Because one of the things I notice when we switched, and I don't know what the cause is, but just my own, you know, just observation, I see a lot less of the police, of the sheriff vehicles around town, it seems to me, than I used to. And when I go into Belmont, I almost, like, when I take my son over to Belmont, Iceland, for instance, invariably, I see a police officer. I don't know why that is, but when I'm around town in San Carlos, the only time I see police officers is when they're doing things like, they'll, they'll sit at, you know, Holly and Laurel Street and watch for people rolling the stops, or things like, you know, it's traffic kind of stuff. But I don't often see our vehicles in and out, except just around City Hall, when they're pulling into the garage. And personally, I would like to know, what would it cost us to have an extra deputy so that we get more visibility? And if we, rather than wait, if we have that extra deputy out there, we have more visibility, and we say to the crime community, "Hey, we're guarding our town, so don't come in here, you know, trying to rip off our residents during the day and so forth." You know, let's get ahead of the curve instead of wait and be reactionary.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of a couple of things with respect to questions, issues you brought up with respect to traffic watch, we still, we do do that. If people call in, if people call in a car and it's behaving badly, so to speak, and we have a license plate, we'll try and track down that registered owner and speak to them. We can't issue them a citation, obviously, but we can, we can talk to them. We don't promote it, but it's something we could promote, but it is something we do do. And then with respect to the deputy with Rebecca here, I think we're talking, for one deputy, just one deputy, is about $340,000, but that includes, obviously, their overtime, their replacement, their worker's comp, their liability insurance, everything. But if you wanted one deputy around the clock, full-time, it's that amount times four. So that's approximately.
So a question then, is there a way, being that we're contracting with the Sheriff's Department, that, you know, we look at this chart you have of day, daytime, and the 33, 32, you know, in there, you can obviously see that Monday through Thursday is really where the need is, if there were a need. Is there a way for us to have an extra deputy, say, on Monday and Thursday, or something like that? And again, one of my concerns, I don't know, hear from the rest of the council, again, is that thing of visibility and having, you know, if there, even if it was moved around a little bit, just so that there's, you know, on certain days, where you'd see a police presence in San Carlos. Because to me, you know, it's that kind of thing that sends a message to the crime community, that's not the place to go, because you see their cops around.
One thing is, is it, we could, the cities, if the city wanted one deputy, you know, you could get one deputy. To get a part of a deputy would be very difficult. So if you wanted just two days a week or that, that would be very difficult, because we'd need a partner to share that with first. So we'd need to shake out a partner on that. It's possible you could find a partner, the city could look to Millbrae or whatever. It becomes a little difficult to manage, and we'd have to look at that. Again, we have to manage our personnel. And then in terms of the scheduling, in terms of putting them on those days, depending upon what the council want to do as it relates to staffing and a number of persons, you know, we could, we have a set schedule, it's a little difficult to change it, but we could look at that. You know, so there's things that we could do, but I just want to make sure you know that if you want part of a deputy, you have to find a partner to pay for the other part.
And there are other cities who are contracting with the Sheriff's Department?
There are Happan Bay, Millbrae, Portola Valley, Woodside.
So it creates that possibility that we could...
That possibility is there, and it would be a discussion that you could have in terms of how to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. I don't know, this may be a difficult question to answer, but the thing I've always wondered about Neighborhood Watch is, how do you, how do you measure its success? How do you, is there a way to look and see if the crime rate's lower in areas and have Neighborhood Watch? What is the dynamic of it that makes it work?
Well, first of all, we know that the principles of Neighborhood Watch drive crime down, and that is knowing who your neighbors are, being aware of what's going on in the community, calling when things are unusual. Neighborhood Watch brings people together, and it gets them willing to report and willing and knowledgeable about seeing what's happening. In terms of studying, there probably is, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. And then lastly, Neighborhood Watch is not a police department program, it's a community program, so we are careful not to over-insert ourselves. We're in a support role for that neighborhood. They're in charge, they run the show, they invite us when they want us, and if they need information or support, we're here for them. So that's kind of how that works. But I can tell you that the, all the principles behind the creation of Neighborhood Watch are the principles that we know drive crime down in general.
What was the, the, I don't know if this is already being done, but, you know, we've had X number of burglaries in this town over the last several years. Is there any sort of predictive modeling that the Sheriff's Department or some agency can do that would sort of give you an idea that would sort of, sort of help you predict where a particular area of a town might be, of our town might be targeted? Or is it so random that it's impossible to track?
There is predictive modeling available. It's pretty new. And, you know, and there's these companies that have, it's called predictive policing, and they have algorithms and they do some things to tell you, there's an area in town based upon what we're seeing that may be an increased likelihood. We don't have it yet in San Mateo County. We're working towards regional crime analysis in this county, because that's where it's going to be most effective. If we just try to look at crime within San Carlos, we're going to be missing a lot of the things around us that will help us interpret patterns. You know, our crooks are shared by Belmont and Redwood City and all over. We need a regional view. We need a 3, you know, 30,000-foot view. But we don't have that yet, place, piece in place yet. We'd like to get it in place, but it does exist.
And then the last, the last item is really just a comment. You know, we all have our own perceptions, and Matt, you have your perceptions. Mine, part of town I live in is that I see the officers out there a lot, you know, usually at least once a day, wherever I'm driving, I see them. So, you know, again, it's a matter of perception, maybe the time of day and where you are in town.
It is, it's a matter of fucking timing.
Sometimes I don't see them at all, but, you know, I definitely notice them.
Thanks, Ron. Bob?
Chief, just to reinforce, you know, people might watch this later, people watching it now. People might watch this later or watching it now. On a regular basis, on every shift, we have three.
We have a minimum of three.
Minimum of three.
At three deputies and one sergeant, so that's four. On day shift, we also have the motor, which makes it five.
Right, right, exactly. So just, just to make sure that people understand, and I remember that when we came to this model, I used to walk around and ask people how many police officers they thought were here, and they'd say, well, on any duty, there were at least seven, eight, 10, of course.
Yeah.
And I'd say three, and they'd look at me like, that's all?
Yeah.
I go, yeah, that's all. And they can't be everywhere at once, and that's why Neighborhood Watch is such a great thing. I'm so happy that you've got more groups going on. And society has to realize that you can't put an officer on every corner. And of course, my neighborhood was heavily impacted, you know, and I, everybody I could talk to, I'd say, you know, it's, this is our situation. You can't put enough people up there forever. It's impossible. You've got to take care of yourself. You've got to be responsible.
I think that's part of the equation. I talked about that earlier. There's this concept of, you need to hold your police department accountable for doing a good job and working hard, but we also, all S-residents, because I have to take personal responsibility for our own safety.
Exactly. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood what we're talking about. We're talking about the cost of this and so on, so.
Yeah, I completely echo Bob's comments. I, a couple of things just to say. Number one, I was really impressed and really happy with the response to the burglary situation, both in terms of the presence of officers and then all the public outreach. And I think, you know, the police department and law enforcement generally is a more performance-based organization in government across the country, but I just think it's very helpful to see these numbers, because it's directly tied to the public perception of service. You call, how long does it take? How much crime is happening? What's your perception? And I think that's great, and I think that the discussion is really helpful. I am persuaded, like you are, that the current level of service is, fits with the community that we have today. And I think you make a persuasive case that it may not necessarily be enough for the community five years from now, and I think we should continue to have that conversation. I also am very persuaded that, as you said, the leverage point for reducing property crime is small steps that individuals can take. And I think it's great that it's one of your goals for the year. I would love to see a number put against it about how many residences you want to contact or how many residents you could secure so that we could kind of monitor that and see if we can improve it over time. Because I think, you know, everybody agrees that it's a good thing to do, but you're just fighting, you know, individual inertia, and so looking for ways to try and just, you know, look for ways to be effective at persuading the public that, hey, you know, you could put some locks on your gates, or you could, you know, do some small things to secure your property would be great. Likewise, I think, I'll echo what has been said before about Neighborhood Watch being really important, and I think, you know, any resources spent to communicate with the organizers of Neighborhood Watch to make sure that those Neighborhood Watches don't go dormant and that people have fresh information, and I think is money well spent. And so I'd love to see that we, you know, kind of continue that conversation. And I mean, it's probably an opportunity for the Sheriff's Department centrally to be able to communicate to Neighborhood Watches countywide, because there's probably a lot of shared information there, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're right on with respect to what Neighborhood Watch does. If there's no crime, they will go dormant, and that's why we need to engage them and get them going, because, you know, if they shut down and they're not watching and they come, and something happens, they're not well-positioned to combat it. So we want to keep them engaged, we want to keep them awake and alive. And in terms of reaching out, you're right, in terms of, you know, the more that we can get that message, the better off we're going to be. We do do a lot at this time, as it relates right now, as you know, we're out, you know, we're sending mailers to every house. I'm about ready to do that in about a month. I'm sending a burglary mailer to every single house in the city. And we've been out to the houses on, whether it's SMC Alert, or, you know, every house in the community has received tips. And we just got to keep doing that and find different ways and more, and more effective ways to not only get the message, but to get them to want to take action. That's the second part.
Yeah, totally. Matt, you have another comment?
Just, sorry. I did like the concept that you had shared about the police and the fire doing some type of, almost like a Neighborhood Watch fair.
Right.
I think that's a, the visibility that gives to the program, I think, is a great idea.
Yeah, we'll have two opportunities this year, where first of all, we're doing the Public Safety Fair, and I think the date is, I'm not sure the date, it's October, September. But, you know, Chief Mopin and I have always participated in National Night Out, which is, it's basically a police-fire-and-public kind of a ice cream night, you know? And, but we've been taking our, the rigs and the police cars to these different neighborhoods, but now we have so many neighborhoods, we want to bring the neighborhoods to one location because we can't hopscotch around that many places. So we're talking, we've started our discussions about that, and hopefully we can have, it'll be probably the first, it's going to be the first week of August, I think it's the first Tuesday, I'll get you the date. But we hope to have a good night, and hopefully we can do it at Burton Park.
Just one more comment on that is, you know, when we have concerts in the park, that might be an opportunity as well to do a little, you know, communication to the community that this kind of thing is available and so forth.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or direction discussion, any public comment? All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay.
Good to see you. And our final presentation of the evening, or afternoon, excuse me. It's still Friday, right? Bring us home.
At the risk of being the kid at the end of the day in school who asks the questions before everybody, before everybody wants to go home. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Stan Mopin, your Fire Chief. Although we have a newly-appointed deputy fire chief who will be serving in the role of San Carlos, he had one day of vacation pre-planned prior to his promotion, of course it was today. So, that's what I tried to tell him, but he just wouldn't listen. So actually, I do feel quite proud to be back up here again as your fire chief and having served in that role for several years already. So, in the first slide, we have the phrase proudly served by the Redwood City Fire Department, and that's not just a phrase for the PowerPoint, it actually does speak to the fact that we are proud to be part of a partnership that we believe is delivering a level of service to the community that I think we can all be proud of, and I think we're very happy with that. Moving forward, our organizational chart, and these are just the positions that San Carlos funds either fully or partially. We did present a full organizational org chart on our update a few weeks ago. As you know, the Redwood City Fire Department is much larger than this and provides a depth of services that far exceeds the ability of what's shown here. For the recommended budget, you see the numbers before you. One of the items that we'd like to point out is under the second line down, Fire and Emergency Services, that's 7.5 million, does include the contract, the legacy obligations, some equipment maintenance and fire truck funding. We will be purchasing one more fire engine here next fiscal year, and that'll put our fleet in a very, a very solid position relative to how we first started off with some equipment that was a little shaky at the time. But as you see, that, that number does include those, and then there's the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Legacy Obligations included in that. As a list of the things that we provide for the contract, some of the obvious ones are fire suppression, emergency medical service, which is clearly a large percentage of our calls for service, somewhere in the range of 61% to 62% of our calls are emergency medical service. You see fire prevention there with some sub-bullets, and I'd like to draw your attention to the third sub-bullet of Plan Reviews and the Fire Department's active involvement in the development process throughout the city also. We're very, much an integral part of ensuring that what's being built in the city is safe and is fire-resistant and able to withstand earthquakes and those types of things. One of the bullet items that's not on there is that we do have, we have been maintaining a response time of five minutes or less for 95% of the time since the beginning of our contract for services. And we are also lucky to be part of an automatic aid system in the county that allows us to keep that time, that response time in check, regardless of whether both fire engines are committed or not. We always have 50 other fire stations to draw from to keep that response time down. Major services also, public assist for calls. There's a list of some typical public assist calls we go on, but the most important thing about the Fire Department is that there is no complete list of the types of calls we'll go on. Basically, as has always been the tradition in the fire service, if you call us, we'll come out. Whether it's related to our job or not, we will come out and respond to citizens' requests. Rescue Response Community, CERT is also a very large program of ours, which I'll talk about in a few moments. The public education and community outreach, we list some items there that are, that are very common to what we do. The last sub-bullet of Junior Fire Academy is a program that we're happy to have brought in with San Carlos and Redwood City jointly in the last two years, and that's a, basically a camp for youth to go to in the summertime and kind of learn the ideas of what being a firefighter is all about. But that's, that's another program that we folded in, the two agencies or the two cities together. One of the big efforts that we just are actually putting in place is the marketing of the Fire Department under community outreach. We have, we're making a very aggressive move to make sure that the Fire Department is well-known throughout the community, and I know that's definitely one of the interests of the council. We traditionally were very much like an insurance policy in that the public knows we're there, but they don't really recognize us until they have a need for us and call for service. And it's our job, and it's our goal right now to make sure that the public is aware of the Fire Department on a much more frequent basis, and we're looking at weekly outreaches to the, to the community. And we're actually partnering with Redwood City Communications Section of the manager's office there with Tara and Brian Carey to make sure that we get these messages out jointly across both cities and that we have a, have a great more, a much more visibility in the, in the community. For our major accomplishments, the first bullet, employee development and promotions. We have had in the last five years a very high level of promotions of officers and hiring of personnel to the, to the effect that we've just been basically ensuring there, or entrusting that people have been giving promotions and are doing the job that they know they should do. And it's now time for us to take a breath and spend a lot more time on developing the leadership of our fire officers and our command staff and moving forward and helping our organization grow and develop. Local hazard mitigation plan, this is a citywide plan, actually, that the Fire Department's taken the, taken the support on for this, and this is a plan that helps us recover from a disaster or any other type of event that occurs in the city and how we get our funding to recover from that. It's actually going on throughout the entire county right now. Every city in the county is going through this, this plan update. But we are, San Carlos and Redwood City are both going through in a method together to help us with some savings in that cost there. One of the other issues that we're, we're working on really hard, and this is a public safety issue for years and years, is workers' compensation claims. It's a very, it's a very physical job, as you are well, well-aware, and we are working aggressively to bring those costs down, as they have been escalating, basically, not just in the Fire Department, but throughout the industry for quite a while. And those are four different areas that we're working on to reduce those workers' comp injuries and get our employees focused on operating in a more safe manner. Just as some numbers for our public outreach, the number of public education events we did in 15, 16 are on pace for to be 52. And the number of community members we've actually contacted is right around 8,500 community members that had some contact through our public outreach, whether it's through our booth at, say, the hometown, the hometown celebration, or just school tours, station tours, and those types of events that we do. This is one of my favorite accomplishments, of course, is the new fire chief. We also have promoted a new deputy chief, Dave Pucci, as you're well-aware, and we are actually, next week, we'll be announcing promotions for the ranks that were affected by these promotions, specifically battalion chief and captain. We also worked on our relationship with the San Carlos Airport was greatly enhanced this year through the Super Bowl 50 planning, and we became, San Carlos Airport became a major player in the plans in case of a major disaster during Super Bowl, the airport was going to be used as a major evacuation center that the Fire Department worked closely with San Carlos or with the airport to, to make the plans for. Just as a quick snapshot on, and you may have seen this before or remember this from our report, just by the day of the week, you can see there's really not much of a fluctuation in the days that our services are called for. Sunday's a little bit slower, but the rest of the week, we have a pretty steady call volume throughout the week. And then time of day where incidents occur are probably very predictable. Again, 1:00 in the afternoon is probably a time you want to make sure you're paying attention and being very safe. That's our spending people have lunch and decide they're going to go do something that may not be in their best interest. Getting to our performance measures, recognizing that, again, that I am the last presenter of the day, just a quick list, I won't go through all these, these are our call types, and you can see the fiscal year 15 actual numbers. The 16 projected are basically just a 10% increase, as we don't know what they are going to be, obviously, until after the fact. But we're looking at the trend of call volume, we're looking at a 10% increase projected for next year. Our financial loss of property due to fires, our goal, of course, is zero, so we're going to be working hard to achieve that.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
What counts as a fire?
Any type of fire. So reported, it could be a vehicle fire, it could be a dumpster fire, a structure fire, anything that has, anything that has the word of fire attached to it, basically.
And so if I were to ask the question, like, you know, a typical, like, what people picture when they think of a fire, which is a structure fire? How many structure fires did we have last year? Do you have a sense, I don't know, I don't want to pin you down on that specifically, but is it, of the 45, are you looking at half our structure fires, is it 10% are structure fire? You know, where you had to, like, roll out the hose and attach it to the?
That, we may measure it a little differently than rolling out the hose, but yeah.
Okay, however it is that you measure it.
Yeah, it looks like, for actual working structure fires, it looks like we were two last year. We do go on more structure fire calls where people, where people perceive that there's a fire in their residence, and maybe just be some smoke or something in the house that's not necessarily a fire. And then, of course, again, going back to the other types of fires that are out there, vegetation fires and those types of things also.
Okay.
Here is our pie chart of just basically how the types, our types of calls come together. I apologize, some of our, some of our indicators that were left off, if you look at the gray 16% pie piece, that was for service calls, and then the nine green and nine gray were what we call good intent or false calls. I'll let you assign the colors because of the same percentages at this point. Any questions? I usually have a question on what a good intent call is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's usually what we get. Good intent calls are the types of calls where we're canceled en route, where we've been dispatched and we get canceled en route, wrong location, or somebody's reported something that there's really nothing happening there. Again, kind of going back to that concept of, if you call, we'll come, and then we'll see what's going on when we get there.
10% or 9%, 9% of the time?
Yes.
That seems awfully high.
It does, it does. And it's, but we get things like somebody will see, what they perceive as smoke or steam or any types of things like that.
Would you say that's across the board in all our, every city?
That's probably pretty typical, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. And again, this is the case of, in our profession, we'd rather go and find out it's nothing, as you're well-aware, I'm sure, yeah. So for the rest of our key performance measures, you see number of public education events conducted. We do include CERT in those, those numbers. You see a big jump from 15 to 16. There was a bit of, some tracking that occurred to make that number jump, but we're confident with the 8,500 for, projected for fiscal year 16. Percent of participants who state they changed their behavior, et cetera, it says not applicable. Quite honestly, that became a subjective measure that we chose not to pursue, and we just have not pulled it out from the performance measures. Finally, keeping our... Finally, keeping, our third objective is based around fire prevention. Number of inspections conducted, you'll see a big jump in that. This had to do with some reallocation of resources to ensure that we get all our inspections completed. Again, number of plans reviewed, you see a fairly large jump there. That's, again, a big component of our prevention bureau in the sense of the development that's occurring and some of the remodeling that's going on. For fiscal year 16 through 18, we are looking at no additional charges to the existing base budget. Our goals for 16 through 18 very much reflect our strategic planning session, as you are probably all aware. We will continue to explore emerging, the industry best practices for leveraging the use of technology, and I heard the term predictive modeling used during the police services, and we are actually aggressively using fairly new software that's allowing us to do that based on looking ahead versus traditionally, we've always looked at what our data has shown we've done. We're now able to look ahead to see how things can be and be able to put several different models in place to evaluate that, and that is actually something we are looking at as we look at the possibility of consolidating fire stations. Engage the community implementing public safety solutions. Of course, the fire department does have the date of the public safety fair that you were looking for, which is October 2nd, but those are different ways we're looking at for getting the public more involved, again, bringing the fire department out in the public. One of the other programs of something similar to this would be a program we've started or an ordinance we put in place in Redwood City for the retrofit of sprinklers to apartment buildings. We are running that program, and it'd probably be a couple more years before we would even look at, look at the success of that, and then we would decide if we would believe it's a practical program for the city of St. Carlos, and that's obviously based on some major fires we've had in Redwood City. Reevaluating public safety requirements for new developments, again, kind of similar, very similar to the police department, the impact of developments on public safety is something we're working a lot closer on. Chief Roth has talked about response times, that's obviously one of our concerns also as we look at the buildup of the area and potential congestion, but we're also looking at the in-building systems and how they, how they apply to what we're doing also. Couple more goals here, evaluating the service levels relative to costs. I know that's a, that's a major interest of the council. We're working on that consistently. I'm working on some ways to reduce that right now, and hopefully we'll be able to, be able to come up with some, some numbers that will help that, that goal here fairly shortly. And the other two, the other two goals, regional consolidation, we're always speaking with our partners about possibilities, and then the final goal about the consolidated fire stations. I have just received the final draft from the consultant just this week, going through it right now, and should be in a position to make some, at least some, an update on that, if not recommendations here in the near future. With that, that is the fire department's budget presentation, and I will gladly take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Matt?
So the last bullet item there about prepare and present recommendations for shared fire stations, that, that would address the station on the Alameda, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Since you asked that question, if you don't mind, Ron, I just want to ask a follow-up, which is, I'm anticipating that there's going to be a recommendation that's going to come around consolidation of fire stations, and I wondered what budget impact, like, it seems like it's going to be in the time, I don't know when we're going to do it or what the recommendation's going to be, but can you just talk in general terms about what the budget impact would be to the city if we were to consolidate fire stations?
Sure. So there's, there's obviously a number or a, the one-time cost of building a new fire station, which in today's world is anywhere from $6 to $8 million. So obviously, if we were to consolidate fire stations with Redwood City, that would be cut in half for a one-time cost savings. When we first were looking at this a few years ago, we're kind of initiating this, we're also looking at ongoing operating cost savings on a yearly basis of anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000 in savings, figuring that about $100, $120,000 is an average cost to operate a fire station, just the mechanics of the station and those types of things. The staffing level is though where the real cost savings comes in, and that's a little bit of the tricky part in this because we would, we would be, we need to be very strategic in how we staff this station, because to reduce, to take two fire engines and just cut it down to one, I don't believe that would, I believe that's too much of a drastic cut for us, and looking at some of the data, I don't think that's something I would recommend, but we would probably be looking at something like a fire engine and something smaller, which potentially would reduce the staffing by one person per day, three people overall, as you know, for three shifts. So the real ongoing cost savings as of, you know, anticipated and kind of speaking anecdotal right now is, is basically three firefighters at this point.
Okay, and do you, I'm not trying to presuppose the outcome, but can you, what is the hypothetical timeline for the decision-making process?
For the decision-making process, so there's a couple of ways we need to, I would like to, to look at this, is that what we've modeled and what we've looked at right now is the operational possibility of this, whether this is, whether this will actually work or not day-to-day on the street. The other factors that we would obviously need to consider would be the legal options of this. If we take a fire station from each city and put it in only, in only one city, you know, how does that come together? Then, of course, the political considerations of this council and the council in Redwood City. And then we have to also look at the, look at the impact of the community and how that goes. As you know, the two hardest things to do in the fire service is to open a station or to close a station. So I believe that just the initial operational is obviously the first and biggest hurdle. Then there's several other smaller ones that we need to get through and work on. So we would be able to come back with an operational recommendation probably within the next couple of months, and then working out the rest of that will take whatever that timeline becomes.
Okay, so we're going to start the debate this year in 2016 and?
I'm confident we will, yes.
And then we'll finish it when we finish it, basically?
Yeah.
All right, Ron?
Thanks, Cameron, just a couple. You mentioned the workers' comp claims, that they had gone up. What's changed over the years? Was it people not taking care of themselves, or?
No, and it's ironic because it's, people are actually taking care of themselves better, you know, as the public learns more, you know, society does things, yes. And, and I believe what we're looking at is a couple of things. Again, this is not, and there's nothing factual behind this, I can't point, point any science behind this. When I, when I talk about claims, I'm also talking about the value of the claims, and so then, and that, of course, is where the big escalation is for us in costs. We're seeing a lot more claims on things that, and I have to be, kind of, say this very delicately, but basically on things that normally in the past, that's been our experience, that people would not report, and that they're reporting more frequently now. So we're seeing a lot more of these going on. But the job also, the amount of workers' comp claims can be, can be indirectly, you know, associated with the number of calls we're going on also, which has increased greatly.
Okay, so yeah, so there's a little bit of a correlation, because one of my assumptions, I think you just addressed it, was the fact that, you know, in the old days, maybe it was, you know, more macho not to sort of work through issues and stuff, and whereas that's less so today, it seems.
And it does seem that way, and quite honestly, you know, the, what we saw in the last probably five to seven years is those people that worked through those maybe injuries in the previous are then ending up with a much more serious medical condition at the end of their careers, so.
Younger generation maybe has taken note of that.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
The other question I had, or I have two more, actually. You had that slide on fire and emergency services where there was the pie chart and all that. Was that just St. Carlos or that's St. Carlos and Redwood City combined?
That's just St. Carlos.
Just St. Carlos?
Yes.
Okay. And then when we first combined departments, what was it, three years ago, four years ago, there were, as I recall, there were a number of retirements that were, Redwood City was facing, and our biggest problem was retention. We had a lot of lateral moves, we had people kind of going through training and not lasting and that sort of thing. I guess I would assume that that's settled out. I mean, how is your retention today, and are you more able to count on these guys staying for longer periods of time?
100% retention. We have not had anybody leave for another, any other fire department, certainly since we've started this, started this partnership.
So, and do they, do they go back and forth between the towns? I mean, do they sort of cross train so they, they know each other's street maps and stuff?
Absolutely. What, they, once a year, they're able to move stations, to move around to different stations, and out of the seven fire stations, they've got several options, whether it's Station 16 up in Alameda and 12 up in that same area in Redwood City, down to Station 9 or 13, more in a kind of a suburban or an urban setting. But they all, because they respond everywhere, and they can work at other stations on their unscheduled days also, they're, they're required to be very much aware of the entire area that we serve.
I should have asked this question of every other department, but what do you see as your biggest challenge on the horizon?
Well, we've got two that we're really addressing, and they're more, they're more internal right now. Actually, I'll add, I'll add a third one, but the two internal ones are, as I was talking about earlier in one of the slides, is our development, you know, for our people. We've, we've, we've lost a lot of experiences you alluded to in the retirement bulge, and we've promoted quite a few people, and we're working really hard to, to develop our folks and to get them to, back to the level that, that we were used to several years ago. The other item is some succession planning for the, for the command staff. All the chief officers are slated to be able to retire right around the same time in about five years. So we're, we're addressing that issue as we, as we move forward. And then the third item, which I added on there, was probably the biggest one, is, is again, how do we address the costs of providing service? And specifically for this presentation, you know, our cost to St. Carlos, but even just across the board, how are we able to provide our services just as one entire fire department? And against the challenges of, you know, the increased demand based on development in both communities.
All right, thank you.
Let me ask a couple of questions, then I'll swing it over to you, Matt. So I wanted to talk about the cost, you know, I, while we were sitting here, I just kind of looked at the numbers and I compared the growth, the projected growth of the professional services contract with Redwood City compared to the professional services contract with the sheriff's office, and if you look at, you know, last year to this year to the next projected two years, we're anticipating an average growth, if you, if you smoothed the growth over those years of 9% a year, 8.9% a year for fire, and for the cops, you're looking at 5%. And so the very first slide that Jeff presented was that, you know, revenue in the city of St. Carlos has grown 6.1% over the last five years, whereas expenses have grown about 4.3 or 7 or something like that. But what that says to me is that, you know, the sheriff's contract and the police services is growing more or less in line with revenue, whereas the cost of fire is growing faster than, than revenue, and, you know, that's concerning. And given that these two departments represent, you know, the largest share of the overall expenses of the city, when you have one that's growing faster than the money that you're bringing in at a time when, you know, the economy is doing exceptionally well, it raises concerns, and so I'm happy to see that, you know, cost controls and looking at costs is a significant goal, but I just, I think it's an area where, you know, we've essentially, I mean, we just, we just recently passed, you know, an extension of the contractor, and so there's not a lot of specific direction to give in this particular budget cycle. All that is to say is it's concerning from, and in terms, if you look across, I would say if you look across all of the line items in the city, it probably raises the most level of concern for me. And I would say part of that is because, you know, if you, when the chief gave his presentation, there's a lot of things that you can point to that says the demand for police services in St. Carlos is likely to rise, both because of the increased population, increased economic activity, and some of the discussion he's had before about reclassifying some offenses previously were felonies down to misdemeanors, so there's more potential criminals on the street. Whereas on the fire department side, and I'd be interested to hear your perspective, it seems as though it's going in the opposite direction, which is to say that, you know, the, the, the building standards are improving, there's more sprinklers in buildings, you know, people have given up their fire cigarettes, and now they have electronic cigarettes.
That are catching fire. That are catching fire now?
Are they catching fire? I don't know. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem as though the general trend is, is the likely increase of more fires. Now, there may be an increase on the, on the medical side, but, but given that, it seems, I personally would want to see that if we looked out, let's say, over a slightly longer term, maybe a decade or something, that fire wouldn't, wouldn't be exceeding revenue, the growth in revenue, basically, and that we hopefully would get to a place where it's, it's growing slower than revenue.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think there's a couple of things here that I would like to just kind of, to your questions. The one thing that is, is very natural is to compare public safety to each other, and they are apples and oranges. There is really, the police and fire department, while they are public safety, they are completely different animals, and I think over, over decades and decades, people have assumed they're kind of the same, and they truly are, operate very differently, and there's very many restrictions on how things are done. The, the discussion about cost, reducing the trajectory of the cost, as you will, the expression we've been using, I anticipate that coming very soon. Like I said, I've got some things that I'm very aware of that hopefully I'll be able to bring forward even in the next couple of months that will help answer this question. And the other part of this is, are a lot of our increase, the rate of our increase is based on the employees' steps, whether they are in their salary ranges, and I'm anticipating year five at the latest that will have much more of a, or much less of an increase based on a majority of the employees reaching their top step, and then we won't see those 5% increases on just salaries alone. We are, this is year three we're in, so we've been able to look at some, how we've done so far and able to make some adjustments to be able to address those issues.
Okay. Matt, did you want to?
When we look at the fire station sharing situation, is there going to be any further talk of this EMS element? And, you know, one of the things I would just throw out there is, you know, you look at Woodside, they have their own ambulance, and I believe Menlo Park Fire Service does, somebody else does, I know.
South San Francisco.
Is it South City? Yeah. And in the past, we've talked about, you know, having some other model to deal with that element, to reduce costs, and I know the guys don't like the idea of necessarily having people in the fires, the fire service who are dedicated only to EMS, but, you know, that, to Cameron's point, it's, it's a 60% of the calls, so it's obviously a big part of the financial picture as well, and we've, we've talked about that before of, you know, how can we possibly bring that cost down, and also the wear and tear on our vehicles, the, you know, running an engine out because somebody's having a metal call. In the old days, when we used to do it with the truck, it really didn't make any sense. So can you address that?
Absolutely, and this is, just as a quick refresher, you know, we are in a JPA for the entire San Mateo County with AMR to provide EMS services, with paramedic services. The, just to address the question of the, the Woodside ambulance is basically a system-wide ambulance for the entire county, and that, that option is no longer open to us. It was in a kind of an initial startup back in 1998. So the possibility of transport, actually, and there's several reasons that I would never rec, or I would never recommend that we go into the transport business for, which I can go into if we ever get to that point. As far as running something smaller is kind of what the phrase we tend to use, a squad or something like that, well, that's always an option, and we did run one in Redwood City for a little bit while we, while Engine 9 was out of service. The way our call volume is going, the, the trend is now to, would be to add a squad versus reduce down to a squad, because we still have the, the, a couple of components of fire service delivery that we, you know, as you know, we have to be, you know, able to deliver on the fire side of this, of the equation at any moment, and we're also locked into an automatic aid agreement with the rest of the county that we're able to provide the same, like, resources in order to receive the same type of service. So the, the ability to have something smaller in a fire station that they could take instead of the fire engine certainly would reduce, you know, things like the immediate wear and tear on apparatus. The staffing levels would still need to be the same if they were still standalone fire stations. A combined station, as we were talking about, would certainly provide, could potentially provide that option to have, say, a two-person squad next to a three-person fire engine also. And I don't want to give the, I don't want to give the impression that we're saying we're not, you know, we're, we don't want to look at anything like that, or we're, there's no way to do that. There's certainly ways to look at doing something like that. There's, there's a whole multitude of factors that we would have to weigh out, certainly, and we'd be more than willing to if we were to go down that road.
So a follow-up, if I may, could that be something, Stan, that we could look at system, you, you said we're in a service agreement, system-wide, is there perhaps a way that we could look at a system-wide EMS, you know, response team that might be peppered throughout the whole system and shared cost, and maybe that would be the impetus for an eventual, you know, what we're, what we've talked about for years of, instead of having each city having its own fire department, something that's more regional?
We could always look at something like that, yes, absolutely. You know, it would obviously be a wholesale change to.
Oh, yeah.
To 10 fire agencies and those types of things. But yeah, it's, it's absolutely something we could look at.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. I just had one, one last question on the, there's an assumed increase of about 10% in emergency medical response. Has that been the trend?
Yeah, that's been, actually, on all our calls, a trend, an increase of about 10% is what we're looking at.
So is that, is that age-related? Is it age, is it population-related? Is it a combination? Are we just clumsier people? Or more ill, you know, illness-prone?
President Ford did not move into town, so we don't have to worry about the clumsiness side of that. But we, no, quite frankly, it's just the increase in activity of people, more people coming to the city, just our exposure with, just having to deal with those types of things. And again, development will drive a lot of that moving forward. One of the, one of the issues I was just speaking with a colleague at lunch about today that I've been trying to, really curious about looking into, and I plan to, is where, how the, the demographics of a city will change as we do development in kind of high-density housing and those types of things. If we get a younger, a younger population that is more service-dependent, we may see a sharper increase in our service calls versus our medical calls. So we're, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work on how I can, how I can measure that and anticipate that kind of a change moving forward.
What do you mean by a service call as opposed to a medical call?
So a service call is kind of like, is anything from, hey, I got a leaky water pipe in my apartment, I, I lock myself out, I need help with, you know, my, my dog is stuck and, you know, just anything else that doesn't really fall under medical, fire, and those types of things. But we're seeing a much more service-dependent population in our country, and I'm anticipating